Lindsay, I can't, I can't hear if the volume is on.
Okay, tell her we hear her.
Oh, there you are.
Oh, good, all right. We hear, we, we hear you. I guess you could not hear us, so.
So I am, I'm here, Madam Chair.
I love that. Thank you. Supervisor Fowler is present, and we are moving on. Members of the Board and members of the community, please join us, for those that can, to honor our country in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. Thank you, and we are moving along. And next is call to the public. Now is the time, members of the public, for you to be able to address the governing board on matters that are not on the agenda. Again, since they are not on the agenda, we cannot discuss them or really answer your questions, but we can refer them to staff and/or we can take it up at an upcoming board meeting. So this is the time for the public to address matters of concern or questions that you may have or comments that you would like to make on matters not on the agenda. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, and also, this is a public meeting, so we ask that you be respectful and courteous, since this is a public meeting. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to the clerk, Lindsay Daly, to have her explain how those at home or online may be able to address us on Call to the Public, and how those who are here present can address us in Call to the Public. So Lindsay.
Thank you, Chair Horstman. If there's anyone here that would like to provide comment during Call to the Public, we have comment cards on the table by the door. You can fill that out and bring it up to me, or there's not a whole lot of people in the room. We can also have you come up to the podium. I do know that Mr. Marcus is here to provide comment today. And then if you're watching virtually on our stream and you'd like to provide a comment, you can email us at boardcomments@coquenino.az.gov, and we will read that comment for you. So Mr. Marcus, if you'd like to come up, we'll provide three minutes on the clock. So it'll turn green when the three minutes starts, and then it'll turn red when the three minutes is up. And if you can just state your name for our minutes, please.
All right, this is Johnny Marcus. I am the project lead for Traveling the Universe with Music Storytelling and Art. And I received a grant, very generous grant, from the county supervisors for 2025, and I'm here to say thank you and tell you a little bit about what we did, as much as I can, in three minutes. So who is Traveling the Universe? Well, basically, what we do is play music on instruments from many world cultures, spontaneously, without notes or fixed chord progressions. We combine that with the art of liquid light projection, displaying brilliantly colored forms that move and flow and transform themselves, often into intricate shapes, both reflecting and inspiring the music. We feel that this combination of audible and visible art inspires a feeling of relaxation and establishes a safe space for free-ranging creative activity. So the purpose of the grant was to use our unique cultural impulse to benefit residents of Coquenino County, bring them some benefit. So the people we worked with, attendees at our presentation included the fourth-grade students at Puente de Oso Elementary, staff and members of the Guidance Center Flagstaff, post-secondary students at the NAU Honors College, the general public at participatory performances at the Beaver Street Theater and Momentum Aerial Studios. So that makes a total of approximately 150 Coquenino County residents that attended our presentations. And well more than 50% responded creatively by playing music spontaneously with us, trying out the technique of liquid color presentation, creating drawings or writing poetry. So now, the bulk of what we did was at Puente de Oso. They were doing a unit on where we are in space and time. And they were inquiring how cultures interpret space and time based on their understanding of the cosmos, and as part of their unit. So what we did was we gave three presentations to each of the fourth-grade classrooms. We covered stars, planets, galaxies, constellation stories, creation stories, and nearby exoplanets that possibly host life. And then, at the end of it, students were invited to send a musical greeting and messages to possible life forms about what they liked about our planet. Now, I think these drawings that you have there, that we made copies of, they might demonstrate how that helped them understand their place and time in the cosmos, because they were sending messages about what was important to them to other planets. And what I wanted to do is, I wanted to give you a little bit of the music we played together as you look through their lovely drawings, and I hope it brightens your day. And let's see, are we already out of time? Was that three minutes?
Feel free to go ahead and play some music and.
Okay, and you can look through some of these. All right, so.
And we did get the handouts, and thank you so much. It's great to see this.
All right, here we go. Important to them, all these great activities, who they are. Light, light is dangerous, but light is sweet. And of course, what better represents our planet than cheese and pistachio? I love the shading. Peace, quality, balance, happiness, justice, what a great thing to send out. Here we are. We mean no harm, okay? And this last one, it encompasses a lot of things. I think there's some pyramids there. Okay, so thank you to Puente de Oso, fourth grade Guidance Center Flagstaff. Just a little music, man. Seems to only last a second. Many of the students participated in beautiful paintings just the first time they got up there. Also played music with us, sample of that. And Beaver Street Theater. Unfortunately, we can't see the colors more. Momentum Aerial, this is like very exciting. You can't see the young lady doing these wonderful things on the aerial trapeze, but I hope we will, it's here. Some of our folk, so. Thank you very much. That's. Okay, thank you. Have a wonderful day.
If there's anyone else that would like to do comment during this Call to the Public, you can make your way on up to the podium, if you're here in person, or if you're watching the stream virtually, you can email us at boardcomments@coquenino.az.gov. And at this time, Chair Horstman, we do not have any other comment cards or emails in our inbox.
Right, very good. Well, thank you for the, those that are here today, and thank you for the information on the traveling universe. So we're going to move on then with our agenda. We have some proclamations today. We have two important proclamations. The first proclamation is consideration and possible action to approve a proclamation recognizing November 2025 as Native American Heritage Month. And I believe that the IPAC Chair, Linda Curly, is here with us to read the proclamation virtually. Or, I'm sorry, she's online? Okay, Linda's online. Would you like to go ahead and then introduce this, please?
Chair Horstman, members of the Board, thank you for this time today. We will be reading the Native American Heritage Month proclamation. Ms. Curly, are you online? Yes, okay. And then we have other members of IPAC here with us as well.
Look familiar? We've seen them here before. Thank you for joining us.
Then after that, I do have a list of events for the county that we'll be putting up.
So I believe our chair is online. Linda, would you like to read the proclamation and say hello to our Board of Supervisors? And hello, Board of Supervisors.
Linda, if you could just unmute.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we hear you, please.
Okay, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing us to be part of your meeting this morning. As mentioned, I am the IPAC Chair since, I believe, August of this year. I'm honored to be here. I'll go ahead and go ahead and read the proclamation. Coquenino County Proclamation: Recognizing Native American Heritage Month. Whereas Native American Heritage Month is a time to honor and recognize the rich cultures and traditions of Native Americans, both before and throughout the history of the United States. And whereas, long before the establishment of the United States, the Native American people stewarded these lands with prayers and reverence, and it is important to raise awareness of the hardships faced by Native American communities, including the historic injustices of displacement, assimilation, and discrimination, as well as the continuing challenges they face in persevering their languages, culture, and sovereignty. And whereas, Native Americans were the original inhabitants of the land that is now known as Coquenino County, and their deep knowledge of the natural world has shaped and enhanced our understanding of our environmental and sustainable living practices. And whereas, Coquenino County is home to the Havasu, Hopi, Wallapai, Kaibab Paiute, San Juan Southern Paiute Tribes, and the Navajo Nation. And the name Coquenino is derived from the Hopi word for Havasu Pai and Yavapai, such that our county's name represents more than one group of people. And whereas, Native Americans have significantly contributed to the social, political, economic, and cultural development of this nation, including serving as leaders, innovators, and members of the armed forces, including the Navajo code talkers, who during World War II sent messages in a code derived from Navajo language that were instrumental in saving lives and led to a faster Allied victory. And whereas, Native American Heritage Month offers an opportunity to learn from the resilience and strength of Native American tribes, communities, and individuals whose histories and traditions are deeply woven into the fabric of our nation. And now, therefore, be it resolved that in the spirit of honoring Native Americans across the country, including the six tribes living on land that is now also Coquenino County, we do hereby recognize November 2025 as Native American Heritage Month, and encourage all residents to join us in expanding our knowledge of the true history of the Native Americans of this great land.
Thank you very much for reading that proclamation. Really appreciate that. And, and I know we're going to get some comments from those that are here, and also, I'm sure, from the Board members. But before we do that, I'm going to ask for a motion to accept this proclamation recognizing Native American Heritage Month. Supervisor Baguette.
I make a motion that we do accept this proclamation recognizing Native American Heritage Month.
Very good. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. It is unanimous, so. And I'm going to turn this over. We have three distinguished members of IPAC with us, and so I'm going to turn this over to you first, if you have some comments you'd like to make.
So my name is Julie Roddy. I'm a proud member of the Ojibwe Tribe in northern Michigan. I just want to thank the Board for your continued support for IPAC and for Native American Heritage Month.
My name is Rose Tohe, and I have been with IPAC for a while. Don't remember the year I started, but I'm just really proud to bring forward some things and to be on the advisory board for the super supervisors. So, and I'm also representative of District Four. So enjoy all the different things that are going to happen. I know that Coquenino County has a list of things that are coming, starting today, or no, Wednesday, and just enjoy some of those events that are coming up as well as with NAU. So I appreciate it.
So my name is Sharon Singer-Doctor, and I've been a member of IPAC probably since 2002 or '03, and was the former chair, but now I'm joy being a member and seeing the leadership of Linda and Julie. They're doing a great job. And thank you so much for supporting our council all these years. And I want to also acknowledge former supervisor Lizard Chalata, who helped to initiate these diversity councils for the group, for the county, and really appreciate the work that you all do in representing and doing a lot of great work with our indigenous folks. I currently work at Northern Arizona University as the Director for the Office of Indigenous Student Success, but also I'm a member of IPAC. And at Northern Arizona University, we have a lot of events happening this month. And if you are so inclined, and if you're available, you're more than welcome to join us this Friday for our Fall Stew Fest. We'll have steamed corn mutton stew, green chili pork stew, vegetable stew, and fried bread. So we have a lot of students who will be coming, but you're more than welcome to attend as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you for that invitation. Do you want to let us know the events that are coming? And then we'll turn it over to my colleagues.
Yes, thank you. So I wanted to shout out the county employees on the Coquenino County Diversity Committee, who helped put these events together, Amanda Dunning and Shirley Watkins. The theme for 2025 is storytelling. So on Wednesday, November 25th, we will have a YouTube video. It's on the Forgotten, about missing and murdered indigenous women. On November 13th, Shirley Watkins will be hosting Gemma Sita Peschlikai, who is a former Democratic member of the Arizona State Senate. There will be a crafts bazaar. I also have a flyer for that. On November 15th, between 10:00 and 6:00 a.m. at the Summit Fire District Station. On November 18th, Shirley Watkins will also be hosting Senator Hightothley, who's an American Navajo politician who has served as a member of the Arizona Senate since 2023. November 20th, Shirley Watkins herself will be hosting, I think the topic is to be determined. Shirley is all over this calendar, this, this November, which I really love and appreciate. And then November 26th, we'll have another YouTube video about the urban rez. So looking forward to everyone joining. Please reach out to me if you would like me to forward you the appointments, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, and it sounds like there's some excellent upcoming programming for all of us to participate on, or participate with. So, and certainly appreciate IPAC. You have been such an essential part of our community, an essential part, quite frankly, for us here on the Board of Supervisors, to ensure that we have all voices and all representation, all cultures, and all sensitivities and sensibilities brought forward here to our county. So thank you so much. And I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues to make comments as well. Who would like to start? Supervisor Baguette.
Thank you for coming here. Just want to say thank you so much for bringing this forth to the Board. And it's always nice to acknowledge everything that is within our county that we feel that we really need to support. And, and of course, we support everything. We're here for you all, and, you know, and I'm just thankful that, you know, that, you know, we are here as Native Americans, only because, you know, the war speaks for itself, that our language speaks for itself. And I think we really need to further to educate and also. also to have our kids really, really learn their languages, you know, because it's important, because it's something that is very powerful, and then something that, you know, has made history. So I just want to say thank you so much for continuing to push this IPAC through and acknowledge, you know, all nationalities, all tribes, you know, we're here, we're here for all the tribes. And so I just want to say thank you so much, you know, and, and of course, you know, we do provide a lot of things to the communities, you know, as leaders, as Red. We're board members, we're, you know, we're head of organizations, we're, you know, we're just, and a lot of our students are in college here too, so, and I greatly, greatly appreciate that, because we have to push even them, you know, to go move forward and to really acknowledge where they're really, where their roots are. And life has changed from way back, as I remember. We, we probably, some of us, you know, didn't have running water, electricity. We had to walk a mile just to get to catch a bus. But nowadays, we have kids that are taken to the road, or the buses come by and pick them up, so. And mostly, a lot of, not all Navajos or other tribes have running waters in their home right now, too. So there's a lot of things that have changed, and, you know, by doing this, we're still acknowledging that, we bring it forth, you know, in our meetings. We do proclamations, and, you know, we share that with everyone. So, you know, we're doing our part, but I always say that, you know, there are other people out there that really, really need to push forward and do their part likewise. So thank you so much for bringing this proclamation to us.
Other members? Supervisor Antiveras.
Thank you, Chair. I would like, I would first like to start off by thanking the Chair for reading the proclamation, and I would also like to thank all of you who joined us this morning for participating in this, and thank you for the invitation to the supper on Friday. Thank you for that. I also would like to thank my fellow supervisor, Judy Begay, for just the kind of quick recap that she has given, knowing that firsthand. I appreciate that. And this proclamation is very well-written, and I just would, I'm going to leave it there. There's not much more that I can add, except to say thank you for being here, and I'm very supportive of this proclamation this morning.
Thank you. Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for reading the proclamation. This is, this is always a good month to have a proclamation. You know, as we know, November is Native American History Month, and it's a time to honor the enduring cultures, histories, and contributions of Indigenous peoples across the United States. In Northern Arizona, especially here in Coconino County and the City of Flagstaff, we recognize that we live and work on ancestral lands stewarded by Indigenous communities for generations. Coconino County acknowledges that it encompasses the sacred homelands of many tribal nations, including the Navajo Nation, Hopi Tribe, Wallapai Tribe, Havasu Pai Tribe, and San Juan Southern Paiute Tribe. These communities continue to shape the cultural, spiritual, and civic life of our region. As we reflect this month, let us celebrate the resilience and leadership of our native neighbors and reaffirm our commitment to respectful partnership, cultural preservation, and honoring Indigenous sovereignty. We must recognize the local contributions of our Native American residents and give them the opportunity to give us their shared experiences over how Native Americans were treated in this community and in this county historically, so that we remember what they went through, so we don't repeat those mistakes again. And so it's really important that we have these conversations, we share these stories, and we share these lived experiences of our elders who went through some really traumatic things like boarding schools and not being able to use their language. And so if you think about it, the Native American has only been allowed to use their traditional practices legally since 1978. I was born in '76. That means I was born in a time before Native Americans could practice their traditional religion. So I say all these things just to share the importance that while we celebrate and highlight, we also remember and we share those stories. Thank you.
All right, I'll make a couple of just minor comments. My colleagues have spoken eloquently on the importance of this, and as has been noted, Coconino County is 40% tribal lands, you know, and that in and of itself speaks the importance of this proclamation and the importance and enrichment of our community through the Indigenous population here in Coconino County. And look at the leaders that we have produced. We have two members of the Navajo Nation that sit on our board. We also have two members of the Navajo Nation that are, that sit at the state legislature. So, you know, we are a community in a land of richness and diversity, and we definitely are, we all are benefiting from our wonderful population and diversity that we have here. So, and IPAC, you all have done a great job of working out in the community, of talking about where we are, who we are, the richness of who we are here in Coconino County, bringing cultural awareness to many here, and we really appreciate all that you're doing for our community and all that you bring to us here on the board. So we want to thank you for that. So pleased to have my colleagues, both Supervisor Fowler and Begay. We learn from them on a daily basis, and I would call them my elders, but they may kill me, so I won't call them my elders, but I really appreciate, you know, both of what they have to offer, and really appreciate us being here today for this. We also want to take a picture, but I haven't heard from Supervisor Fowler. Would she like to say a few words? And then we're going to do the next proclamation, and then we'll take the pictures. Can you wait for just, okay, thank you. Supervisor Fowler, did you have comments you'd like to make?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Thank you for bringing this properly proclamation to us. And Linda, thank you so much for reading it. It looks like maybe you're at home, I'm at home as well, in Tubus City on the Navajo Nation, so it's really good. I want to thank Coconino County through the years that has been changing its policies, and we need to continue to do so, to work with learning how to work and incorporate some teachings and just the way of life and how we live into our policies, and we need to continue that. These are sovereign communities, sovereign governments that are, that we are, that are within our counties, and when we have a sovereign government-to-government relationship, it's very important. It's really important that we continue to learn about various cultures and just creating better understanding, and the educational opportunities that are provided are really important. If we can have an open mind to all cultures within our rich county of rich and land, diversity of land and people, we need to really learn from each other. I just want to encourage everyone to continue to learn from Native people and other, all people, basically, and our histories. We all have come from very, very painful histories. I think the Native Americans, you know, and really have, really come from a painful history, so we have, we're here, we're still breathing and here, and because of all the prayers and ceremonies and just the, what our ancestors endured and the resilience, and so that's what keeps us strong today. And yes, we're in leadership positions now, and we need to really continue to groom that. And I think it's really important that we continue to have these recognitions and providing opportunities for the public to learn. Thank you so much, really appreciate the reading of the proclamation and those that came and spoke here, so thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Fowler. And we're going to go on to the second proclamation, and then we'll take some photos if that, if that works. So we have a second proclamation this morning. This is consideration of possible action to approve a proclamation designating November 4th through the 11th, 2025, as a time to salute and honor the services and sacrifices of our men and women in uniform transitioning and those transitioning from active service. And we have one that did transition from active service and is serving us here, here in Coconino County.
Thank you, Chair Horseman, and board members. Yeah, I'm a proud 30-year veteran of the US Army, and I'm a Army Reserve retiree, and it feels great to have, to have one career to be retired from already. But I am, I am honored, and I appreciate my fellow county community members for allowing me to read this proclamation. So, Coconino County Proclamation, this is, this is a Coconino County proclamation designating November 4th through 11th, 2025, as a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Whereas, the residents of Coconino County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the Armed Forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the Armed Forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Coconino County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that 40% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during that transition from years after military service, excuse me, from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green, Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas Coconino County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now therefore be it resolved with designation as a Green Light for Veterans County, Coconino County hereby declares November 4th through 11th, 2025, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of those in uniform transitioning from active service. Be it further resolved that Coconino County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in a window of their place of business or residence, along with Coconino County, from November 4th through 11th, 2025. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Thank you for reading that. So thank you for your service. We're going, I'm sorry?
Madam Chair, if I may just mention quickly, thank you to Jess for reading that proclamation. Facilities is unable to be here today because they're working the election, but I did want to mention on their behalf that we are an Operation Green Light for Veterans County. We have 12 locations that will be lit up with green lights starting this evening, including this building, the administrative building at 219 East Cherry, also the 110 East Cherry Building, the Courthouse Health and Human Services, the Fort Valley Building where community development is located, the Williams Justice Court, the Juvenile Department, the Adult Probation Department, Public Works, the Sheriff's Office at Leaf, Parks and Recreation at the Admin Building, and also the Cooperative Extension and Sunnyside Weed and Seed. So 12 locations that will have those green lights, starting this evening and through November 11th. So thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you very much for that information, and so that I don't forget, we're going to entertain a motion designating November 4th through the 11th as a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that we approve the proclamation designating November 4th through the 11th, 2025, as a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Supervisor Fowler. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 It is unanimous, so thank you, and thank you for reading that proclamation, Jess. We're going to take some comments. Are there any, any other events that are happening on this, other than the green lights, that thank you for giving us their location? Anything else you would like to say on that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd also like to thank Juanita and Felice and all those involved in our salute to veterans in the lobby here at the 219 East Cherry Building, as we had it ready for this proclamation, and it's lovely to see the friends and family of our county employees on, on that wall with their photos, so thank you.
Thank you, and just to note, I think Coconino County has a high percentage of its employees are, have, have served our country in the military, and then continue to serve our country and our county here in Coconino County, so. And I saw that, and thank you, although I have to say, my father was Marine, he wasn't in the Navy, he did serve on a naval vessel, so I had to make that change. But thank you, that was a very nice honor, and really appreciate that, and appreciate all that have served and continue to serve here in Coconino County. I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues for some comments. Okay?
No one else is jumping up. All right. Today, on this Veterans Day, we pause to honor the brave men and women who have served our country with honor, courage, and unwavering commitment. Across Northern Arizona, throughout Coconino County, and especially within District Two, we are proud to call all our many veterans our neighbors, friends, and family. Their service, whether in times of war or peace, has safeguarded the freedoms we cherish and shaped the strength of our communities. We recognize the sacrifices made by these individuals and their families, and we express our deepest gratitude for their dedication and resilience. Today and every day, let us commit to supporting our veterans, listening to their stories, ensuring they receive the respect and resources they deserve. To all those who have worn the uniform, thank you for your service. And I just wanted to say that in addition, for my family, my grandfather and my great uncle both fought in World War II, my grandfather in India and on the hump, and my great uncle in Belgium, and they, they, what they came back with the GI Bill was what was the foundation of all the educational success of my family moving forward since World War II. And so, you know, they, they went and served their country when needed, fought fascism, and built everything that we, my family, has. And so I just want to say thank you and put a shout out to the veterans as well. Thank you.
The comments Supervisor Antiveras.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is really a neat proclamation, and thank you, Jess, for being here and reading it this morning, and I know that there are so many families that have service members. I never personally served in the, in the Armed Forces, but my grandfather, my maternal grandfather actually served in World War I, and I knew him the first 15 years of my life. I had four uncles who served, and I, growing up as a child, I remember one of my uncles was a helicopter pilot in the Marines that served in Vietnam. And growing up as a child, I realized that it is not just the service members that serve, but it is their families as well. And so I'm very appreciative to every person who has been, who has served in the Armed Forces, so appreciative of the presentation that is in the lobby this morning, and that Coconino County is also celebrating this by lighting with green. So thank you for this proclamation, and I'm very supportive of it.
Supervisor Begay?
Yeah. I'm thinking. Why do you make me think? Wow. Thank you, Jess.
Thank you Jess for the proclamation. And I'm sitting here thinking, you know, you go to service and you come back and the services you need here, you know, I'm going to talk to, about the Navajo Nation, only because they're part of the Native American society. And I just feel that, you know, we, they, they, they went to war and they came back. And some of our veterans are still living in homes without running water, like, and they live in G houses and no electricity, no plumbing. And then you see, you see them that where they're suicidal. And I'm always an advocate for trying to get a hospital, a VA hospital, under reservation for them, because it's a hardship for them to even travel to get services in Prescott. And so, there's so many things I'm happy for, and there's some things that really bothers me. So, I think we really need to do more of the green light stuff throughout the whole county. We're the second largest county land base. We should hit every city, every, every place like in Page and all other places. Maybe just do banners, say thank you veterans for your services. I feel that, you know, that's what we need to do, for them to be, to feel that they're greatly, greatly appreciated. I do, I have family members that went to service, came back, some of them passed on. But today, I still see a lot of that stuff going on and it really hurts and it really bothers me. What are we going to do with that? How do we approach these things? But there's so many things that we can do, but I just want to say food for thought. And I really appreciate the, the proclamation that was read. And I think that, you know, we just need to do more for our, for everyone. Not everyone has a job, not everybody has a vehicle, not everybody has a home to go call home. And they just resort to alcohol or whatever, and that's how they become suicidal, stuff like that. But I just want to say, I can't, thank you so much, you know, for, I'm proud to be a mother of a veteran. I'm proud to have a, a brother, a couple brothers that were in service too. But anyway, that's what I was thinking about when you were talking and it bothered me. And I think this is the appropriate time to say something that we can do better, we can do more for our people out there. And it's not just, you know, within the vicinity, but it should be across the Coconino County. Something has to be done. So, anyway, but my family has been trying really hard to work with the veterans. We're going to be having a Veterans Day dinner for our veterans in Tubus City and surrounding areas on Veterans Day at the Assembly of God Church in Tubus City. And I'll be butchering this weekend. So, I'm going to give them the best kind of mutton ribs with fat on it and maybe fried bread, you know. And then we do invite them to our Christmas, annual Christmas dinner that the family has too. And we make special gifts for them too, so, and we appreciate them. And we know who they are. We see them walking around, feed them, buy them something to drink, give them food, you know. So, I just want to say thank you, Andy, under your leadership, you know, for really pushing the proclamations that come to us. Each one of them has a, has a purpose. Each one of them means a lot to, to, to everyone. I just want to say thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Gay. Supervisor Fowler.
Thank you. And thank you Jess for reading the proclamation. And usually we do have more of our county veterans that are presenting, but I want to just appreciate the, and recognize all the families that have veterans in their homes and that are part of their families, because it's, it is a, a struggle to have, have family members. I come from a long line of veterans, but I want to just say that today, you know, we have this proclamation and in Coconino County, we really honor our veterans each year and at various times of the year also. And it's just really unfortunate though, from the federal government today that is cutting benefits to the veterans. These are essential, essential services that are needed so that we can reduce the, you know, the suicide and just the struggles that veterans go through. There are proposals that are on the table that we are advocating against on reducing healthcare, housing, food assistance, veterans, homeless veterans, and job trainings and other programs and just basically the staff that are being reduced at, at these veterans' health departments and programs. So, it makes it a lot more challenging for our veterans to receive services. And from Coconino County, we will continue to advocate against those cuts and, and instead to advocate to support our veterans and their families, children of veterans. They go through so much to, and they do join because they're constantly being, they get deployed and then have to go to multiple places and then just really challenging, challenging times that they go through. So, I just want to appreciate all our veterans and being able to help them to transition back into the home once they come back. And that's why we always work on creating more jobs and economic development is so important in, in these rural communities and being able to bring families back together. And we do that from multiple places with our programs that the social, from our health department right into our courts. And even with, if unfortunately they find themselves in the court, our court systems, we have our Veterans Court, Mental Health Court. We also have our jail programs with our Sheriff's Department. You know, these are all programs that are very much, wherever they are in their lives, we try to help them and help their families as well. So, I just really appreciate them having to, you know, protect who we are and, and really stand up for our homelands and our, our people. And just want to thank each of them and their families, because it is challenging to, to be a veteran and to, for the families as well. So, thank you and thanks again Jess.
Yes, thank you. And of course, we, you know, it's always important, I love the green light concept of, you know, lighting up for our veterans and to show our respect and honoring them for their service. And, and it makes, it's very sad to see the government shutdown, which is affecting so many people in our community, 10% of our community are federal employees. It affects the military, even though there have been funding through October for our military folks. And as we go forward, I think one of the best ways we, who are fortunate enough to continue to receive payment from our jobs, unlike many in the military and others in the federal government and the Forest Service or National Park Service and others that are not receiving funding, you know, let's try to do what we can to remember them. Let's try to be as generous as we can. I know we have the stuff, the buses coming up on Safeway on Saturday and Sunday to make sure that all those that are having and struggling, those that may not be receiving their paychecks can, can have a good holiday coming up. So, let's try to be generous and remember those that during the shutdown, in particular in our military. So, thank you, really appreciate this Jess, appreciate the proclamation. And with that, we're going to take some pictures. So, let's go the, just outside here if we can, and we'll get some pictures with the proclamation. All right. We are back. We got some great photos and Supervisor Fowler, I'm sorry you weren't here to have those photos taken, but we were lucky enough to have two wonderful proclamations and people here to present those. So, we're moving on though with our agenda. And we have, as you know, Consent Agenda, members of the public. And for those that are here, our Consent Agenda are items that are no, are mostly ministerial or administrative in nature. They can be handled through one motion and one vote from the board. These are items that are not then open to individual discussion or individual vote, but we, the board, can remove these items from the Consent Agenda for individual discussion, in which case they will undergo an individual motion and an individual vote. And we have items, you can see items three through 16 on the Consent Agenda. So, I'm going to ask my colleagues, are there any items that you would like to remove from the Consent Agenda at this time? Supervisor Antiveras.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to remove item number five, please.
Very good. And I'm going to ask to move number seven, item number seven. So, all right, any other items? Oh, okay. Members of the board, can I get a motion for the Consent Agenda exclusive of items five and seven?
So move.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All those for approving the Consent Agenda exclusive of items five and seven, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. So, we are moving forward on the items that we polled. Number five, consideration of possible action to approve a funding agreement in the amount of $3,002.36 from the community initiative funds, 600 from District 1, 600 from District 2, 802.36 from District 3, 500 from District 4, and 500 from District 5. The Ponderosa Fire District for Emergency Response of Fire, Medical, and Hazardous Material Response for one, for a 195 square mile response area and 29 square mile fire district. Supervisor Antiveras, I know it's mostly in your district and I know you've polled it, so I'm going to turn this to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ponderosa Fire Chief Lee Antonides was not able to be with us this morning because he has been called out. So, what I would like to do is just read the background. It's very short. Ponderosa Fire District is seeking funds to assist in cost to enhance emergency communication capabilities at Station 82 located-
And so they'll be working with us to do the engineering. Rick Schuler is with us today, Rick. And Rick-
Hello, Rick. Thanks for joining us.
Yes, and Rick has been, you know, involved with our post wildfire flooding efforts since 2010 through the Schultz process. He was the actual engineer for the Copeland Detention Facility and did all of that historic work there and has worked with us through flood impacts to the facility and to other areas of the highway and was very supportive of us through securing this grant, helped write the grant, helped along with Metro Plan. Of course, Metro Plan did, really did a great job preparing the grant with Rick's support. And so we're excited to move this forward. And this is kind of the last big project that we'll have moving forward. I'll also add, as this is our transition year, we are finishing up a set of projects in the flood area as I speak. The Cinder Lake Project on Forest is underway right now. Repairing a very large headcut that is compromising Cinder Lake and its ability to absorb the floodwaters so they don't flow down to Donnie Park into Supervisor Gaye, Board Member's, Begay's District. And so that's underway, as well as a project at Upper Campbell. That project is now underway. So we're in the fall projects and making really good progress. And I'll be finishing those up this year. This project, Protect, I expect will take some time. We have to go through the environmental process. The next contract that will come to you, it will be on November 18th, which is for the environmental consultant for that project. So, and with them on board, we'll be able to start moving forward through our process. So we're excited about that. And we'll hopefully see the end of the shutdown so we can, you know, start moving forward with federal highways as well. We've got a great relationship with federal highways and working very closely with our representative there, so.
So will this be what, the last major project and the flood project on US 89?
Yes, yes, to mitigate the highway.
And I want to point out, first of all, the great job you and your team have done, Lucinda, on an incredible flood mitigation work in this corridor.
Quite a process.
It has been a tremendous success. And it also shows how successful we, this county, have been, both the advocacy of our staff and also the board and the Flood Control District with regards to federal grant monies.
Absolutely.
You know, another 1.4 million in federal grant monies. Without the federal government's assistance, we never would have gotten the type of flood mitigation work that we've been able to accomplish.
Absolutely, and that's been critical. And that's come through the support of the board and the support of our congressional members. And so the good thing is that's paving the way for future flood mitigation projects in our special flood hazard areas. I think we've got a lot of acumen and experience in securing those grants. And so look forward to continuing that process, so.
Directors, any comments? Supervisor Vasquez?
Yes, thank you for bringing this to us and asking for us to discuss it because it's always great to see when these projects come to fruition in terms of, you know, this project, I remember getting the phone call saying we were awarding this in like May of '24. And so we're literally talking like 15, 16 months later, we're going to get started. So it's really exciting, really look forward to seeing what kind of improvements are out there. And I guess my one question would be, once they start construction out there, how is that going to impact travel on 89 in those areas?
Well, that'll be a very major consideration in the process. Although most of the work is offsite, you know, most of the work will occur upstream of the highway to mitigate the water flowing to the highway. And I will say that ADOT is in a process. I think they're hopefully nearing completion of the project. They received emergency relief funding through DOT for some measures that were within the highway easement itself. Most of our work, the lion's share of our work, will be outside the easement. So it shouldn't have too much impact. Certainly, there'll be truck traffic, equipment, that type of thing, coming in and out of the sites. But most of the work will be upstream in the neighborhoods that, you know, at the Copeland Detention Facility and then also the government tank crossing. So those would be the two primary areas.
Great, thank you.
Questions? Supervisor Antiveras?
Yeah, just a comment. Thank you for this briefing, keeping us up to date on what is going on. And it is nice that it seems like one thing is, at least the end of it is in sight now and the ability to move forward. So thank you for that. And also thank you, Rick, I believe I got the name right, for being here with us this morning.
Thank you.
Supervisor Begay? Thank you, Lucinda. Come back to the podium. I just want to say thank you for all the work that you're doing with your staff. And you knew, you know exactly who to contact to get the job done. I fully support you because this is badly needed. For years, there's been floods, there's, for years, you know, this work needed to get done. But, you know, it's been really progressively moving within the past few years. So I just want to say thank you so much, you know. And my colleagues, thank you, you know, for your understanding and being right there with, you know, as a board and supporting Lucinda and her crew. So I just want to say thank you so much. And I take that back to your staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we've got a tremendous team.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, Supervisor Fowler. And by the way, I cannot see Supervisor Fowler, so I'm really looking to you all to please keep me informed if her hand is raised. Sorry, Supervisor Fowler, please proceed.
Quite all right. Lucinda, wow, Protect Grant, we're finally on the ground. That's really amazing. Thank you for everything that you and your team are doing. Thank you. Just want to say that. Thank you. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Any other comments, questions? All right, and again, I really appreciate you, Rick, being here with us as well. And we really look forward to having the end of this. We're looking forward to celebrating that as well. All right, we are moving on. We're now the Flood Control District Board of Directors, but we need to become the Board of Supervisors. Do I have a motion? A motion in second? Motion in second? All those in favor of reverting back to the Board of Supervisors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sorry, Chair Horstman, I don't think you guys voted on Item 7 as Flood Control District.
Well, I'm glad some attention. Thank you very much. Thank goodness for you, Lindsay. I need a motion to approve RFQ 2025-102 and approve the agreement as more fully set forth in the agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. So we are, in fact, moving on, thank you. And we now need to resolve back as the Board of Supervisors to have a motion.
So move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor reverting back to the Board of Supervisors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now the Board of Supervisors again, so thank you. But not for long. We need to resolve as the Health District Board of Directors to have a motion.
So move.
I have a motion by Supervisor Fowler, second by Supervisor Antiveras. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now unanimous, the Health District Board of Directors. We have one Health District Consent Agenda item. Members of the board, no, we have two, I'm sorry. Do anybody, does anybody here want to remove this from the consent agenda, either item? Or I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda for the Health District Board of Directors.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Health District Consent Agenda.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Supervisor Fowler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous, and I meant to say directors, I always give that. Anyway, we're directors now. But not for long. Do I have a motion to now resolve back as the Board of Supervisors?
So move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are unanimous. We're now the Board of Supervisors. But we now need to resolve as the Jail District Board of Directors. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in second. All those in favor resolving as the Jail District, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. We are now the Jail District. We have one consent agenda item. Do we want to remove that for discussion? Or I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the Jail District Consent Agenda item.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Director Fowler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. We now need to resolve back as the Board of Supervisors. Do I have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now the Board of Directors, and we have a discussion item. This is the Discussion of 2026 Cogia County State and Federal Legislative and Administrative Priorities and Authorized Agenda. And I know we did receive a handout here at the beginning of our board meeting, so we should all have that before us. And I'm going to turn this over to Deputy County Manager Eric Peterson to start us off.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members. This is a time of year that we have done historically, whether through roundtables and work sessions or a discussion like this with the board. We are taking an approach this year to adopt an authorized agenda. And I want to be very clear about the language so you all understand what that is. An authorized agenda provides government affairs the authority to advocate on behalf of the county on these positions. So as a bill comes up, that may not be the exact bill name that's listed here, but it is that bill concept and it is that kind of legislation. We have, the authority exists for the county to engage in advocacy on certain issues. You'll see for both state and federal, we have some overall state priority and federal priority issues. Obviously, we oppose the mandates. We oppose mandates being placed upon us by either the state or federal government. That's a very general statement, but it is, there will be bills that come up throughout the year that we will want to be opposed to or such. This authorized agenda is your action that authorizes the staff to go advocate on behalf of the county. This does not mean that we're going to stop talking with you throughout the legislative session about these bills that are coming up and such. We get this authorizing action out front so that if there is a period of a couple of weeks between the next board meeting, the board's not able to meet, we can move and do advocacy in the legislative session and through the congressional calendar as well. So this is, we are bringing this document today to talk about this authorized agenda. And then from this, on the 18th, we will come back with the agenda, the edits and corrections, and a resolution to adopt the authorized agenda. Also want to be very clear that the agenda is not the document we will take to all the congressional people and say, pass all these things or support or oppose all these. We could never get a meeting with enough time, you know, to go through all these items. So we'll pull the priorities that are possible in the art of politics in the state and federal government. We will pull the priorities out for the year that we believe are the most salient priorities of the time for those print materials. So that's a bit of our process, what we're looking at. So we're really asking you to go through it. And I think, Keith, all five members have been consulted about this list prior to today, really look through and see are there major changes from an authorizing perspective that staff, you know, that you have concern about or you want to see on this list that are not.
And I'll also point out, Eric, as you just did as well, that sometimes we, in between board meetings, have an opportunity to send a letter in advocacy for some of our positions. And this also gives that authority to be able to do that, so, thank you. All right.
Good, it's still morning, so good morning, Chair Horstman and board members. Yeah, and I think Deputy County Manager Peterson laid it out pretty well in terms of what we're looking for here. So a lot of the things will be written in sort of general terms. That sort of gives it a wide range of understanding that can be used. But then, of course, if there's anything that, you know, needs attention or we will, of course, try to consult the board whenever possible, so we're not going to try to do a bunch of stuff without talking to people, especially if we think things might be more controversial. We're not going to be too clever about trying to wrap things in under here. But it does kind of give us an opportunity, move forward with stuff and not always have to wait to talk to all five people. If it's something, like some of the letters we did during the shutdown, which is very clear, were programs that the board has always approved of and thought are important so that we could send out letters quickly. And so the other thing I'll mention kind of is by calling this the authorized agenda, as we may be sort of flipping the way we spoke of these terms in the past. So the agenda, in some ways now, the authorized agenda is the larger, broader document. And then as we get closer to visits to DC or the Capitol or stuff, we might narrow it down to some strategic priorities that we really want to hammer on for that particular visit. And the last thing I'll say before I start going through some of the items on here is that the other thing we also know is that things change very fast in the world of politics. So last year, for example, when we put together an agenda, we didn't talk anything about what we were going to do during a shutdown. We didn't talk about what we were going to do to rebuild the North Rim because we didn't know we were going to have a fire. So obviously, we're not bound that this is the only thing we can do. If events change and something major comes up that we have to add things, we can do that through the course of the year. But what we would like to do is, when we enter the beginning of the year, both for our trip to DC and for the legislative session, is just have a blueprint, a star list, so we're not just kind of winging it on a day-to-day basis. So that's kind of the idea here. And then I think we can just go through it. And then if people, I guess the most important thing is if there's something really important that's omitted or that's not included here, those would be things to bring forward before we adopt the official agenda in two weeks. If there's something that we've obviously overlooked, I'm less concerned about taking stuff out or wordsmithing a few things. But if there are things that you don't like the way it's worded, it's okay to bring that up too. We'll try to do better with that. And then we did speak, Sean and I did speak with all the board members, but there has been some time lapse. I think we started with the chair and then went to everybody else. So what we've tried to do is synthesize all those conversations. We also reached out to some of the department heads. We've talked to Flood Control District and CJCC and others to make sure that we're not missing any priorities there. But again, we're not perfect. So if there's stuff that's obvious that we missed, we should figure that out before the next two weeks. And then I'll kind of go through it just sort of gradually. I don't think we have to necessarily go bullet by bullet, but we can kind of look through it just so. Those, yeah, looking at categories to see what we're looking at here and what types of things we're considering. So starting with the state agenda, Deputy County Manager Peterson already, I think, outlined the state principles that we often operate under, which is we're, of course, always going to oppose policies that reduce local control or that impose unfunded mandates from, you know, when the state legislature passes cost on to the counties. We're pretty consistent about that, just like as we were at CSA, we oppose that. We want the county to be empowered to do what they need to do and also not to bear costs that the state should be covering. So that's already sort of covered. I think underwater, we have a couple points there. I know Chair Horstman's very active in the rural groundwater area, so we want to make sure that we're reflecting that and making sure that we're trying to give the counties more authority to deal with water issues or at least make sure that we're engaged on that. If anybody at any point during this, we can hold some of the questions to end, but if people want to interrupt during a certain phase of this, if they have any concerns, feel free to do so. The second one under the state ones, we have the homeowner wildfire insurance reform. I think this is one we've talked about a lot at the board. Our CSA resolution passed on that, which we're really excited about. That was the closest, yes, all of our resolutions passed at CSA. We went four for four. It's the first time that I know that's ever happened, perhaps in forever, but certainly in the time that all of us have been there. So that was very exciting. And I think I'd spoken with Supervisor Antiveras earlier, and she did mention that we, one reason they all passed is that they were very thoughtful. We did our homework as a board and as staff, and we didn't come with sort of local niche issues and stuff. We tackled issues that a lot of counties are dealing with, so it was easy to get the support. And so it was really exciting to have that happen. Yeah, I'm going to move my little picture so I can scroll down here. Then on transportation, some of them we mentioned here are a little bit more specific than general terms because they're things where we already know we are working on and that have been priorities. For example, our County Public Works Department has submitted an application for the Federal Lands Access Program Grant for Lake Mary Road widening in District 3. And I think since they're doing that and it's something that is important for our county, we've included that specifically. Same thing with supporting the continued funding of the Arizona Smart Grant Program. That's been hugely important throughout rural parts of the state. And certainly, Cogino County has made use of that program. So those types of things that have been very helpful in the grant space, I think the board will continue to advocate for. On short-term rentals, this goes back to another item that we had a CSA resolution on, and that one passed overwhelmingly. I think it was like 48 to 6. So really good work by the county and staff to put that forward. And again, here, what we're trying to do is not, the county isn't interested in getting rid of short-term rentals, but we want to have some kind of regulation so that it doesn't negatively impact the character of communities. I know there's been problems in Williams and Sedona with the proliferation of corporate short-term rentals rather than mom-and-pop things. And so just trying to make sure that the county can have some authority to address problems with short-term rentals and to go back to what the state was like before they passed a law that even some of the people that voted for regretted. I think in 2016, that sort of unleashed the current environment we have with short-term rentals. On education, we have the Support a Policy Change to Restore Funding Responsibilities for Accommodation Schools built by the School Facilities Board before the legislative change in 2014. A pretty specific issue that our superintendent is concerned about because there's, in the state, the states have done some mandates, but the counties can't do much with accommodation schools without state approval, so they can't do construction and other things they would normally do to older schools because of those laws. So trying to, go ahead.
I'm going to pop in on education and just ask the board, many of you met with the superintendent, you want a general statement of support for increased education funding, maintaining education funding, not necessarily new funding out of the counties, but the state?
Madam-
Supervisor Fowler?
If you could speak, if Eric could speak louder, that'd be great. Thank you.
Absolutely, Supervisor Fowler. I was asking if this bullet, if this category, do you want a general statement of support for maintaining and increasing support of schools, public schools, you know, writ large, education funding?
Absolutely, you know, and-
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, obviously to support and quite frankly advocate for adequate funding for our public schools. You know, I'd probably go further, but maybe other people wouldn't. And that would be to basically talk about limiting the voucher program so it's not eating away our monies for our public schools. But that would be my thought.
Yeah, we could certainly discuss with those and figure out. I think we can add to this education because it's just the one bullet. And I think a broader sense for that, same thing, oh, go ahead.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Yes, I'd definitely like to see it expanded upon and really advocating for full funding for public education. And I too agree that the voucher program is pulling funding away from the public education system. And so we're spreading ourselves too thin with money we don't have. And so I think it's important to rethink that program and see if there's ways to reduce it or contain it so that that cost isn't dipping into our overall education funding and causing our public education to have even more deficits. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments, Supervisor Vasquez? Sorry, Antiveras. The other, the other side, yeah.
Okay.
Other side, the right side.
Yeah, I know, I am definitely in favor of funding for education. I think maybe where I find myself differing with the chair and vice chair is I don't know, I don't know that I adopt the same position on the vouchers. So I don't know that I can support what they're recommending. I guess maybe what I'm saying is, is that something is causing so many people to want education outside of the general public setting that I think there may be a deeper issue there that needs to be addressed. So I'm just going to leave my comments there.
I would just add, Madam Chair and members, this is a great example. And the reason I brought it up here is what's the parochial nature of the issue for the county, right? And so we, we'll address a very broad bullet, right, without necessarily getting ourselves into the, some of the real intense politics there about the education funding that are happening. But I think that's, you know, that speaks to the voucher conversation, right? But we do have schools built into the county apparatus. And so adding that bullet, I think, speaks to that. We'll find the right wording, I think, wordsmith with you before the meeting and see if we can arrive at the right policy position and save ourselves.
And thank you for that. And I am happy to engage in thoughtful conversation on this, and I just want to put that out there now, so.
And I think accommodation school funding is very different than the general public school funding that needs to be done at an adequate level for, you know, quite frankly, I'd love to put something in there about full-day kindergarten. We used to have full-day kindergarten. We don't have full-day kindergarten anymore. And so, you know, those are the kinds of things that, you know, to advocate on behalf of our communities for the public school funding is really important.
Then I do see Supervisor Fowler has her hand up from my screen, so I'll pass it to her, so.
Thank you. Madam Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Fowler?
Thank you. Yes, I am, you know, by the state legislators with their actions is costing, ending up without taking action, is mandating or having the counties have to pick up, you know, step in to help our schools. So we need to make sure that the state legislators are supportive of schools and provide proper funding and not pull public school dollars away from these public schools that are very much needed into these private hands. And it just keeps on happening and, you know, they haven't, they, we need them to do a study and put a real plan together on how we can have a very strong educational system within the state of Arizona that starts from kindergarten through the elementary years to high school into college and university. That clear path needs to be done. So however way that we can say that, I think that that would be, that would be really good. It's just too much stress on these schools. Thank you. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor.
And as Deputy County Manager said, and I'll tend to agree, one thing we'll try to do on both the state and federal document is, a lot of this will try to focus, the language we have will try to focus on where there's accounting excess, if it impacts the county's ability to provide services or impacts residents. But in terms of, I think, in terms of how they interface with larger political issues, we'll be careful in sort of making sure that the way we phrase things has to do with whatever county services and stuff so that we're not getting, well, not that we can't have positions on political issues, but we'll try to make sure that the document reflects things that we, in our positions as a county, can advocate for at the state and federal government. Because if we start advocating beyond the issues where the county supervisors have a role, then I think it starts to become more challenging to have those conversations. But I think we can, we're to broad enough so that those concerns can still be raised because I don't want to, I don't want to get to a point where we're minimizing concerns, but individual supervisors may weigh in a little bit differently on particular issues, but it'll tie into the bigger issue that we all support, public education. But we may have differences of opinions on some of the, and the issues that are associated with that. And we'll try to make this document reflect a fair consensus of the county, if that makes sense. that makes sense. But those may be ongoing discussions because it could change over time. We could see what the impacts of the voucher program are, for example.
Supervisor Buggay.
Yeah, I know that we have a vast county. I was just kind of wondering about the outreach that you're doing, that maybe you'll be doing to finalize some of these topics that you'll be bringing before the board for us to review and also to act on. That's, that's my question.
Supervisor Buggay, most of the outreach will be done through departments. So like in terms of education, we hear a lot from the Superintendent of Schools Office, the work she's doing and such. So Government Affairs isn't planning to go out to talk to every school board district and such. But when we come back in the eighteenth, we will have recirculated these to departments and getting that feedback that they're getting from the community, that sort of connective tissue we have with all, all corners of our county.
Thank you.
Thank you. And moving forward to economic development, we do continue to support the expansion of broadband. I think that's more federal than state, but there is an interface between the two, so we left it on our state document. We could probably have more on there for economic development, but as we go through the federal, we put more on that side. But certainly can have those discussions. Again, when we nationally met with some of the board members, we had a couple of board members that did a good job of trying to shrink the documents so we don't have too many priorities. Then we had a few that wanted to put things back in, so we're trying to find a balance there where we're not asking for everything, but we're not leaving out critical areas. With Health and Human Services, I think we've done a lot in this space during the shutdown, so things like making sure that, well, like what the board did with making sure that WIC recipients don't get cut off, even, and stepping up and providing funding through the contingency fund is, I think is entirely consistent with that board priority and similar things with SNAP, Medicaid, other things. I think we have a long-established board of trying to care about making sure those kind of programs help our most vulnerable citizens. I think that's pretty straightforward. On elections, we have, again, elections is sometimes a heavily contested terrain, so we've sort of kept the, the statement vague enough, but supporting funding and policies to protect voter access, I think everybody agreed it's important that everybody that is, is allowed to vote should be able to vote as easily as possible and voting systems ensure free and fair elections for all. I think that's pretty straightforward. Justice and public safety, we have several programs, again, some of the basic things like reentry pathways, programs, other things that help reduce recidivism and to help people that are justice-impacted come back and contribute to the community is a longstanding tradition for the county and something that we'll continue to support. And then on the state, the emergency management, back to enhance or state emergency management, funding for local governments. And then again, going back to one of the CSA resolutions that passed overwhelmingly this time, it did not pass two years ago, the DFFM funding to continue the wildfire emergency response program, which has been very valuable for two-thirds of Arizona's counties. The biggest recipients have been Coconino and Hila County, but that's because where the most recent disasters are, but nearly every county in the state could be impacted by wildfire and post-fire flooding. So having those resources and it's kind of the state's version of a contingency fund. If it's there, it'll be easier to access, and if that fund gets depleted, having to go a special session to help people out seems like a backwards way of doing thing. And I was happy that some of the other counties spoke very much in favor of that at CSA, including Hila and Mojave, so that it's something that's important across the state.
I'm going to take federal back in.
Sure.
Keep running the screen there. So I wanted to walk through the federal agenda with you.
Any comments, questions on state? All right, thank you.
So on the federal agenda, Madam Chair and members, many of these things are, we have done many times over, supported projects that are ongoing. Some of them are very parochial district issues that you have brought up along the way, but I think we can go a rather quick review here as you look, and if there's a change before the eighteenth that you want to see. But again, our overall policies, we oppose mandates and cost shifts in any way to us. We, we hold that bedrock principle of protecting public lands, that first category we have, and the monument is included in that, the opposition to uranium mining as well. I'm going to keep going down until you, someone stops me, and I've got Supervisor Fowler, I can see you.
A question? Yes, go ahead.
Five from the page? Okay, all right. We added a section about the fires, the Dragon Bravo and the White Sage Fire. And so here is where we've made some very broad language, not knowing exactly which bills will come up relating to rebuilding of the North Rim and the Grand Canyon community overall and impacts of the fires, so. SRS in payment lieu of taxes, this is something the county has dealt with for many years. We've always supported SRS and PILT. Education here, go ahead, man.
You need to put, you have to put in the Impact Aid.
Next one down.
That's PILT.
Education, support for reauthorization and sustained federal funding for Impact Aid for schools.
Oh, you put it under.
Okay.
I see what you did.
So we pulled SRS and PILT apart from Impact Aid because their, their concepts are the same. Impact Aid is directly about education. SRS can go some different ways, PILT can go different ways, so it's not, it's not a wholly education.
I agree.
Related argument, so wanted to make that distinction. On the flood control district, these are items that Director Andreani's team, Administrator Andreani's team, has been working, have been working on and added for our, our list here. Forest restoration, another great list of projects. This is, Coconino County is what we do. Hold on, sorry. EM, Supervisor Fowler was just with emergency management in DC with the Disaster Recovery Task Force on the FEMA reform bill that we have been supportive of and have sent letters to, so that is included in here. Go ahead.
We testified on the bill for, for the Representative Stanton as well.
Good. So.
That was before your time.
It was before my time, so I didn't know about that piece, so great. Things happen without me, it's good to know. I want to be very clear that there are big sections here, but this is so critical to the lifeblood of the county, forest restoration, emergency management, these, the ways the federal interaction happens. Transportation, again, projects that we are aware of, that we have on the schedule, and also the programs we use. Economic development here, we've, we've tied back in the rural broadband conversation, and also the, we put the North Rim extension of the season to year-round in this as an economic development note as well. Health and Human Services, many of the basic programs that we have all supported for many times, you know, opposing cuts to those, encourage you to look through that and make sure it reflects the board's view. Elections, supporting funding and policies to protect voters' access, certainly on the bills on, we've been supportive of. And on immigration, we are, we're making sure to walk a fine line here with the values of our county that I know that we all have about immigration and comprehensive immigration reform, to reflect that appropriately, also respecting the rule of law and the issues that are embedded within the immigration conversation. We are not attempting to get into the hard aspects, the polarization of the immigration conversation here. It's an authorized agenda. We felt that if we wanted to have positions on bills as they come up, we should have something in the authorized agenda. We tried to develop the kind of language that meets what we have heard from you in our conversations about immigration. So if there's something you don't see that's good there, we can have meetings about it, we can get it pulled together if it's not reflective of what you think.
I'd like to say under Health and Human Services.
Yep.
The full Medicare. No, no cuts to Medicare.
Would you like Medicaid included in that? No cuts to the state grants for Medicaid?
And Medicaid for state, absolutely.
And kind of an extension of that, and I'm not sure if it's reflected in here or not, is the fact that mentioning that when the feds cut services, that costs shifts to states, which ultimately costs shifts to the counties, so.
If you go to the federal overall priorities, you'll see some Eric Peterson wordsmithing here.
Like I said, maybe it was said earlier, but with Health and Human Services, that really is something that we're looking at right now, so I thought I would address it.
On the, on the federal overall principles, priorities, we oppose policies that reduce local control, we oppose legislative actions that transfer fiscal, federal financial responsibilities to states and to counties without the funding coming with it. We also, the fourth one is the bullet that I put together on this issue, a fiscal control mechanism, maintenance of effort on state, so that the state can't just simply say, it's going to go right through to the county. You know what I mean? If there's a $10 million cut to a program, which is a minor cut, but let's just use that as an example, that the state can't just pass it right along. So the state has to maintain its effort before the cut, that level of funding before the cut, so that the county is not picking that up, if that makes sense. That was the language that I've talked to some of my colleagues about, that we've sort of authorized agendas have looked at in the past, is a way to say, it's a great thing if you're going to cut, if you need to cut, make cuts, but here's the tool that we want to have that, that doesn't let that cut come down to us. That's an area where the states and counties oftentimes end up at battle, at loggerheads with the council and state governments, National Council of State Legislatures, and NACO and National League of Cities, so. But it's there, as sort of an overall principle when we see the cuts coming down. Supervisor Vasquez. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, additions? Supervisor Ontiveras.
No question, just a comment that I appreciate the way that you guys are going about this, like establishing the framework and really getting us ready for the next legislative sessions. I, I like this forward-thinking way that we're doing this, so thank you.
Don't see Supervisor Fowler online.
Supervisor.
She's not, I know it's her. I would say, as we wrap up here, this is our, this is the document, if there are some changes, or something that, you know, middle of the night, you think about it, get hold of Keith Rye, we'll start working on it on the eighteenth, we'll have this as a resolution and adopt, a document and then adopt.
Do have a couple of weeks to take a look at this, and let's make sure we do so, make sure we've covered it all. So we really do need to beef up education.
If he talks to me at 2:30 in the morning, I'll answer at 3:30, but not at 2:45.
I might. Ask Andy. All right, any other comments, questions? Very good. Thank you, and thanks.
I just appreciate their work in putting this together, and we've been having these conversations for some time, and many of them are from the past, but we still need to keep on working on them. And we will review and come back together again. Thank you.
Thanks, Supervisor Fowler. Any other comments, questions?
Good job.
All right. So it is high noon, so we're going to go ahead and take a break for lunch, and we will be back at 1:15. Been very efficient. Yeah.
And we are continuing on with our board meeting this afternoon. And I know we're going to be as efficient and as effective as we can because we will be taking off for a board retreat, which will be at Grand Canyon, South Room of Grand Canyon. So, and staying in Tucson at Red Feather, and then going on the Grand Canyon for a board meeting. So, we're looking forward to that. And it's wonderful to be able to host this in District One. And I hope our next retreat will host in one of the other supervisors' districts. So, and it'll be really fun. So, I'm excited about doing this. I don't know, I actually wanted to go on Lake Powell with Supervisor Fowler, but okay, District Two is fine too.
Yeah, maybe there'll be, next time, it'll be in my district.
That's good. Yeah, time of year is important, so. All right, let's proceed, because we do want to get to the Grand Canyon and get ourselves ready for our important work tomorrow. So, we are moving forward on 115, Discussion Items. Our next is Presentation and Update on Coconino County's Safety Action Plan and Local Road Safety Plans. I thought I saw some people from Public Works here. And I know we're going to be talking to the Public Works folks, but first, let's turn it over to Deputy County Manager Eric Peterson.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Members. Christopher's coming up here, and we have our team from Public Works. This is a conversation about our Comprehensive Road Safety Action Plan in relation to the Safe Streets for All grant program and other, just a vision zero of deaths on our highways. So, this is not small work. This is big work about our infrastructure and how it supports lives and supports our economy. And I really, Public Safety Day, Public Works Safety Day, had a chance to talk about how important that work will be, especially as we look at school and access to schooling throughout the county and area. So, just a big work ahead of us here, a big project, but also incredibly important to the lives of our citizens. I'll turn it over to Christopher with that.
Thank you, Christopher. Good to see you, and good to see your staff here with you.
Thank you. And so, it's, like Eric said, this is not a small project, and it relates to, largely relates to roadway safety, and more specifically fatalities on our roadways. And we have a great culture of safety at Public Works. And this work aims to become in more alignment with Federal Highway Administration towards, and you may have heard it before, Goal Zero. And so, I'm going to turn it over to Nate, and we'll go through this presentation, because in the near future, we're going to ask the Board of Supervisors to adopt a program related to fatalities and Goal Zero. And so, this is setting the groundwork and helping introduce the project and the program. Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Madam Chair, Board of Supervisors, I'm so excited to be here today. Let me tell you a quick story. When I was 23 years old, my then-girlfriend, now-wife, and I were back in Pine Top, my hometown, for 4th of July. My wife, she was a trauma ICU nurse here in Flagstaff, and she had to come home for 4th of July, come back to Flagstaff 4th of July to work. Just outside of Snowflake, she got passed by a semi-truck going 80 miles an hour, and it blew her off the road. She was talking on her Bluetooth with her dad, and all of a sudden, all she heard was a crash. She got airlifted to Flagstaff Medical Center, luckily was able to walk out. From that day forward, I made it my goal as a civil engineer to try to work towards preventing fatalities and preventing these serious-type crashes on our highways. So, that is why I'm so excited to be here today. We received this, well, over $900,000 grant from Federal Highway Administration for SS4A, Safe Streets for All. And then, we also received an Arizona State Smart Funds Grant for our local match. So, this planning document is coming at no cost to the county, except for our staff time, which I'm very proud to say. Greenlight Traffic Engineering, there are consultants on this group, but we have a huge group of key stakeholders, which I'm really kind of impressed to see, the group that we have put together. We have local school districts that are on our key stakeholder group. We've invited the local bike and running communities. We have local fire districts on our key stakeholder list. We have the County Attorney's Office, we have the Sheriff's Department, we have ADOT, we have DPS, we have Northern Arizona Healthcare, their trauma department is on our key stakeholder list, Guardian Medical is on our key stakeholder list. And the reason why we have so many of these key stakeholders that are not engineering-related is because we focused too much on engineering in the past. We need to start focusing on public outreach. We've seen that over 40% of our crashes are due to driver error. While we'll still look at engineering improvements to get our infrastructure up to better safety standards, we're also going to be looking at post-crash care. We're going to be looking at how we do messaging to certain demographic of individuals to try to change driver behavior, change the risky driving behavior that we see. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mike Blankenship with Greenlight Traffic Engineering, and he is going to go over kind of what we're going to do with our Comprehensive Safety Action Plan. And then, we also have an aspect called Local Road Safety Plan that is specifically focused on our county roads in terms of what type of projects we need to do to improve our safety. The Safety Action Plan is going to be more of a joint effort with our key stakeholders, and how can we address all the other aspects of roadway safety other than engineering design? So, with that, thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Nate. Appreciate the opportunity to be here, to speak to you today. Got about 30 slides. I try not to get bogged down in too many details here, but like Nate said, the first half of it is going to be going over the general tasks that we'll be conducting as a team over the next two years to get this Safety Action Plan developed. And then, towards the end, I want to show a few slides that give you a flavor of what the crash data is telling us. And I'm sure you guys all know, you know, your key roads and where crashes are occurring, but we just wanted to give you a few slides there that get into that and highlight a few things that I think are pretty important about types of crashes. So, you've met some of the project management team here. Nate's leading it from the county side, Greenlight is leading it, so myself and my colleague, Josh Barger, who's an NAU grad and is very familiar with Flagstaff. In addition to the Greenlight team, we've got two national consultants that are on our team, Kittleson and Associates and High Street Consulting Group. And then, Nate's already mentioned, we've got key stakeholder groups and implementation groups that are providing oversight throughout the next two years as we develop this plan. That's highlighting the amount of basically free money that you guys obtain, thanks to Nate's efforts here, just under a million bucks here to conduct this safety project. So, again, the key to these Safety Action Plans, and this funding comes out of Federal Highway Administration, but they're really pushing the Vision Zero, that nobody should be dying on our roads, regardless of what mistake they made, what type of behavior they're using as a driver or pedestrian. They should be able to survive a crash and make it home to their family members. So, the Safety Action Plan is more the global, here's what's going on county-wide on the county roads, here are some key emphasis areas and strategies that we're going to use to deal with those crashes. And then, the second big task is developing those local road safety plans on priority county roads, and we'll talk more about that. Key to these plans is what's called the Safe System Approach. And the six key principles on this slide, I think, really get at the heart of this Vision Zero and Safe System Approach. Deaths and serious injuries are unacceptable, regardless of why they occur. We should not accept people getting killed on our roads. Humans make mistakes. That's what makes us human. That's what makes us human. We shouldn't be paying for, with our lives, for making those mistakes. Humans are vulnerable. The human body is extremely vulnerable, especially if you're a, what we call, vulnerable road user, a pedestrian or a bicyclist that has really no protection when they're struck by a vehicle. At least, if we're in a vehicle, we do have some protection from the vehicle itself and the safety features of that vehicle. Responsibility is shared. Nate was getting at that. It's not just an engineering issue. Law enforcement, health, emergency response units, our schools, everybody needs to take responsibility for the safety on our roads. Key person, key individuals that need that, take that responsibility are the road users themselves. There's research going back decades that shows 95% of crashes, or in crashes, 95% of the time, there was some type of human behavior involved. Somebody did something they shouldn't have done, or didn't do something they should have done, that leads to the crash and ultimately leads to the impacts and the consequences of that crash. And a key one that we harp on every time we do a Safety Plan. And it's not just in Arizona, it's not just here in Coconino County, it's nationwide. But when we look at the fatal crash statistics, usually 40 to 50% of the people that were killed in a crash were not wearing their seatbelt. This is a zero-cost improvement that we just need to get people to change their behavior and start wearing their seatbelt, so that they're not ejected when they roll their vehicle over on a two-lane, high-speed rural road. There's five key elements to this Safe System Approach, and we'll be developing safety strategies using each of these five elements. So, safe users, and that gets to the whole behavior, pedestrians doing what they should do, drivers doing what they should do. The safe roads, that's more of the engineering aspect. And a lot of the strategies coming out of this plan will focus on safer roads. Safe vehicles, there's not a lot, I think, that the key stakeholders in this Safety Plan can do from the safe vehicle. That's more the manufacturing, automotive industry. But I think one thing in terms of policy could be that when you do, when the county does purchase new vehicles or new transit vehicles, whatever type of vehicle, that you're looking at those key safety features when you make those purchases. Safe speeds, not only speed limits, do we have the correct speed limits out there, but is the road designed so that folks are driving at safe speeds and not overdriving the road? And then, the post-crash care, the EMS folks getting out there, you know, that golden hour of getting a trauma victim to a trauma center. I know on, we've done countless safety studies with Navajo Nation, and there are dead spots, cell coverage, where if somebody is in a crash, they can't use their cellphone to call 911. Okay, so, the first of the two main tasks in this project is to develop a Safety Action Plan. So, just want to highlight the key tasks in this. Leadership commitment and goal-setting, we've talked about that already. It's setting that Vision Zero policy. And yeah, that will come directly back to the Board of Supervisors for adoption of a policy and a resolution that will be crafted with your input, that basically says, "We're adopting a Vision Zero policy, and we'll do what we can to get to that zero in 20 years, or 30 years, or whatever the timeframe is that you decide on." How are we going to measure our progress with this Safety Action Plan? We don't want it to just be a plan that sits on the shelf and collects dust. So, annually, part of the SS4A grant is that you have to report back on your safety numbers. Did your fatal crashes go up? Did they go down, serious injuries? So, we'll need to, the county will need to monitor their crashes annually and report on that. The planning structure, we've talked about an implementation group. In fact, our key stakeholder group is meeting tomorrow at ADOT for a few hours for a workshop. But having that key group of key stakeholders outside of the engineering community to help guide and develop the Safety Plan. Conducting regular meetings with those key stakeholders and with key county staff. Already mentioned, tracking and reporting system, we'll be developing, our team will be developing a webpage for the county to keep track of their safety numbers in terms of crashes. Also have a website for the public to use to voice their concerns. Where are the crash issues from a public standpoint? The bicycling community on Lake Mary Road, or wherever they may be biking, they can pinpoint on that online map where they are seeing issues and near misses. And then, really, these non-public works entities and agencies want to incorporate their safety concerns, and maybe more importantly, their safety strategies, what they can do to drive these fatal and serious injury numbers down. So, in terms of the crash data, and this Safety Plan, by definition, from Federal Highway Administration, has to be data-driven. We can't just sit here and come up with numbers and where the problems are. The data has to point us in that right direction. So, we're utilizing the most recent 10 years of crash data, and it's pulled from ADOT's crash database, it's called ACES. Couple of things with that. So, it's the most recent data, but it's already almost a year behind. We're looking at it through the end of '24, but, you know, we're almost at the end of '25 now. Typically, the ADOT's crash database, it runs about six months behind. So, we're looking at the most recent full 10 years of data, from January 2015 through '24. But that data is only crashes that have actually been reported and made it down to Phoenix to get into the ADOT database. So, if, and I think the county sheriff's office does a great job here, but we have had some local agencies that, they go out, they fill out their crash report, but it doesn't make it down to Phoenix. So, it's like a crash never happened. So, we need to make sure that the crash data is accurate and getting turned in properly to ADOT. Some of the things, and again, I'm not going to bore you with details here, but things we're looking at in the crash data, where are the crashes happening? What types of crashes are they, are happening? When are they happening? Are most of our fatals occurring at night? Are there lighting issues with some of these crashes? We'll be looking at demographics. What's pedestrian and bicyclist crash data looking like? Do we have facilities, proper facilities, for these vulnerable road users? Do we have paved shoulders wide enough for bicyclists to use? A key feature of this, when we start putting together both the safety concerns and then the safety strategies, are what we call systemic issues. So, instead of just focusing on a particular curve or a particular intersection, which we will do, we also want to look holistically and say, "Okay, is there something we can do on all of the county rural roads that would improve safety?" Rumble strips, better curve warning signs, whatever it might be. And that could be a systemic project that is done county-wide on all of your roads, not just on a particular road. We'll be looking at both traditional crash modification factors and crash countermeasures, but also at some of the newer things, like some of the flashing warning signs that can be installed at intersections, that will only flash when, when there's going to be a conflict, a vehicle coming off of a side road conflicting with a through movement. Engagement and collaboration, again, a county webpage, an online survey that the public can use to not only pinpoint where they see crash issues or potential crash locations, but also where they can talk about safety concerns and driving behaviors and what they see out there on a daily basis. The Fatal Crash Task Force, I think this is going to be a key, a key part of this Safety Action Plan, is to develop a multidisciplinary Fatal Crash Task Force that meets, hopefully monthly, but at least quarterly, that meets and discusses any fatal and serious injury crashes that occurred in the previous month, and looks at it, again, holistically. Is there something from an enforcement, you know, is there a speeding problem out there? Maybe we need more direct enforcement out there, targeted enforcement. Maybe it's a sharp curve and we didn't have the proper warning sign. Maybe this is where the teenagers go out and race on Friday, whatever it is. And discuss not only what happened during that particular fatal crash, but what can we do to prevent that from happening again? And then, multiple outreach and engagement activities. So, we'll be presenting to you guys at least three times. This is kind of the kickoff. We started the project a few months ago. We'll be coming back with, towards the end, with what the key recommendations are from the Safety Plan, and then, obviously, that Vision Zero resolution. We'll have a meeting with you on that. We want to get out to key community events where we can hit a lot of people within a couple of hours and survey them on safety issues and concerns. So, whether that's County Fair, Navajo Nation Fair, whatever it might be, we want to be out there at those events. And then, we want to hold some community meetings. We've mentioned a few of the communities here, Mormon Lake, Doni Park, Kachina Village, and out in the parks in Ash Fork area. Again, to get that feedback from folks that are using and experiencing these roads on a regular basis. So, we're not just basing this plan on what the crash data tells us, we're also basing this plan on what the public and our stakeholders tell us, what the county sheriff tells us that we're out at this curve twice a month responding to crashes. It's just an example of an online survey that we've used in the past, and we usually get really good participation. These are set up easy where the public can come in and pick a pedestrian symbol, or a bike symbol, or a driver symbol, plop it down on an intersection or a section of road, and say, "This stretch of Council Winona Road is difficult for my kids to cross to get to school," whatever the comment might be. Equity considerations, and actually, we, the Federal Highway Administration, we're probably not supposed to be using the word equity anymore, but what we're getting at here with this, and it is a requirement, or has been a requirement in the SS4A grants, is that we look at those underserved populations and how traffic safety impacts them. For example, in our more poverty-stricken areas, you're usually going to see a higher number of pedestrian crashes. There's lower vehicle ownership, lower use of vehicles, more walking. So, we'll be looking at those types of demographic data also. We will look at any policies and design standards that the county uses from a traffic safety standpoint, and look for opportunities to improve safety through policies, and either introducing additional policies or updating existing policies. And then, the last key part of that Safety Action Plan is coming up with a long list of safety strategies that hit on those five elements that I talked about, safe road users, safe speeds, but also hits on what we call the four Es, engineering, education, enforcement, emergency response, so that all of those key stakeholders can take away some strategies and start implementing them. When we do identify these projects, we're trying to identify not only projects that will improve safety, but will have a high chance of getting safety funds to actually build and implement those projects. So, we'll be looking at federal funding that flows through ADOT, HSIP, Highway Safety Improvement Program. And the county's been great about putting in applications and receiving that funding. The SS4A, there's a billion dollars a year nationally for SS4A that can't even be touched by state DOTs. This is money that only local agencies can use, big pot of money. And this Safety Plan will set the county up to go after up to $25 million a year in SS4A grants to actually build projects, improve intersections, widen roads to have paved shoulders. The ATTIP, I think that acronym is incorrect. I think it's ATIIP, but it's basically the Active Transportation Program that provides funding for pedestrian and bicyclist facilities, trails, sidewalks. So, these projects will be set up to help the county go after and receive funding. The back end, and probably the more, well, I don't want to say more important, but it'll definitely be the interest, more interesting part of this project, local road safety plans, where we will actually be going out with the county, looking at your priority roads, these 14 roads we've listed here, driving them, walking them, daytime, nighttime, peak period, off-period, looking at curves, looking at measuring lane width, seeing if they have shoulders, making sure they've got the appropriate speed limit. Do they have the right sight distance at intersections? We will spend a ton of time up here in Flagstaff and going out with Nate's crew next year with some of his staff members to look at these roads. And I can tell you right now, I haven't pulled the crash data up, but the first three roads there, and you guys know it, in terms of number of crashes, Lake Mary Road over that 10-year period, around 400 crashes. So, 40 crashes a year, we're averaging on Lake Mary Road. Loop Road had right around 100 crashes over that time period. Council Winona had right around 200. So, there's 700, about 45% of the crashes on county roads are on those three roads. But these other roads are important, too, and, you know, some of them where you've got new development coming in are just going to see additional traffic and traffic conflicts. Again, we'll do a deep dive into the crash data for these 14 high-priority roads, and looking just at a little more detail of the factors involved in the crashes on these So, here is a long list, and not necessarily an exhaustive list, there could be a few other things that are added here, that we'll be looking at and making recommendations on. So, the curvature of the road, both the horizontal curves to the left and right, but vertical curves, crest curves and dips, superelevation, the banking of the road as you go through the curve, sight distance, passing zones. Where we have passing zones, do we have enough sight distance to make a safe passing maneuver? Are there locations where we could stripe in a passing zone? The widths of our road in terms of the lanes and the shoulder. I've already mentioned rumble strips, but center line and shoulder line rumble strips, fairly inexpensive, big bang for the buck in terms of bringing crashes, crash numbers down when you put rumble strips out there. Look at the signing and the pavement markings. Intersections, do we have turn lanes? Do we need turn lanes? Are the turn lanes long enough? Delineation both along the roadside and in the lane. Guard rail, is what we have out there now adequate? Do we need more guard rail? Do we need to upgrade existing guard rail? Already mentioned, speed limits. Vegetation removal, we did a road safety assessment, boy, this was probably 10 years ago with the county on Lake Mary Road. And the county worked with the National Forest Service and had a lot of trees removed that were up close in what we call the clear zone, the recovery area, for when a vehicle leaves the road, they're hitting these trees. They were able to remove some of the trees and improve the chances of recovering when you run off the road. Again, we'll develop a lot of strategies and projects for these key 14 roads, and we'll prioritize those projects. Again, looking at ways to bring in funding, and in fact, part of this project, we will be developing grant applications with the county. So, we'll be developing three of those Highway Safety Improvement Project Program applications that'll go into ADOT. And we'll be developing a Safe Streets For All Implementation Grant to go after up to $25 million in funding. All right, just wanted to throw a few slides up here to let you know what we're seeing and what you probably already know from living here and driving and walking and biking these roads. Again, the focus of this Safety Plan is county roads. So, we know some of the issues can be on non-county roads, on ADOT facilities, on ADOT facilities that are basically the main street coming through Flagstaff. But we're going to focus on the county-maintained and roads that the county operates, has control over and responsibility for. So, I know this is tough to see on the map here, but this first one is showing all of the crashes that have happened on the county roads in that 10-year period through the end of 2024. The next one shows the fatal and the serious injury crashes, where they're occurring. And again, we'll be doing a deep dive into all of this data to make more sense of it. Here's how the severity breaks down. There's been just over 1,600 crashes on county roads in the last 10 years, so about 160 crashes on average per year. Of those 1,600 crashes, 20 of them were fatal. Of those 100, 1,600 crashes, 20 of them were fatal. Somebody got killed, at least a somebody. Some of these, more than one person dies in it. There were 85 serious injury crashes. These are basically, you, you don't, you didn't walk away from the crash. You're still alive, but you didn't, weren't able to walk or drive away from it. So that, that's a life-changing crash, even, even though there wasn't a fatal. 66, two-thirds of the crashes are what are coded by the, the law enforcement as no injury, basically a, a property damage only, fender bender. So that's kind of good, that two-thirds of the crashes, nobody is taken to a hospital or to the morgue. But of those 1,600 crashes, the trend is not good. And this isn't just in Coconino County. We see this in the state and nationally. But 10 years ago, there was 100 crashes in the county. Last year, there were 212. It more than doubled over this 10-year period in terms of how many crashes are occurring per year.
Can I ask a question on that? Did you also take a look at the number of cars on those roads? In other words, were there more cars utilizing those roads? So are we comparing apples to apples? Or is it really because of an increase in usage?
We have another traffic engineer in the room. I like that question. Looking at rates, that, that would be what we call a, a crash rate. And you're right, so population has grown. It's termed vehicle miles traveled, but the, how many cars are out there driving on our roads? And that has gone up, and we will be looking at that. In fact, I think we have a slide here that shows the crash rate per population, but we're also going to be looking at the crash rate per how many people are out there driving. So you're right, there has been an increase in driving and vehicle miles drav, driven, and that almost correlates hand in hand with crashes increasing as, as the drivers increase.
As I haven't turned the mic on. What I find really surprising about this is that cars, you know, the safety, you know, all of the new safety equipment in cars, the backup cameras, the, you know, that your lane indicators, I mean, it kind of goes on and on and on. So there, that cars seem to be a lot smarter than the drivers at this point. And so I'm surprised to see all of this.
So, and another good point, and vehicles are becoming much more safer. You are correct. So I think we're going to see that impact more as the older fleet gets retired. Most people, most drivers don't have the newer with all the bells and whistles. Although even some of your, almost all cars nowadays, new ones, have some of the bells and whistles. But when we've got everybody driving those with vehicles, that is, you are going to see these numbers dropping because of the safer roads. Yep. No, good question. So this shows on, on the left, the green is the serious injury crashes by year. And remember, there were 85 of those over the 10-year period. And then the 20 fatal crashes per year. We're showing a trend line there on the fatal crashes. There's only, and, and this is not to belittle how many fatal crashes we're having here, because one is too many. But the numbers are so small on an annual basis. You can see it ranges anywhere from zero fatals in one, a couple of years to three was the highest year in terms of a fatal crash on the, on the county system. But the serious injury crashes have definitely shot up there. 17 in the last year. So the last three years of serious injury crashes were the highest three years, 11, 12, and 17. So we are seeing severity go up also. So here is one crash rate. This is crashes per 100,000 population. So we did factor in, population has been increasing for the most part on an annual basis. And you still see the crash rate, crashes per population is going up. Not at that, as steep as a, a trend line as we saw in just looking at total crashes. So what types of crashes? Of those 1,600 crashes, what are they? Are they rear end? So we've circled here, and these are the key, down the left side are the key crash manner that's coded on the crash report form that gets sent to ADOT. So angle crashes, those would be your T-bones. Basically, intersection or driveway crashes where somebody pulls out in front of somebody or runs a red light. Head-on, we know what that is. Left turn crashes, again, intersection-related. Rear end, side swipes. Couple of things I want to point out that are circled here. So of those 20 fatal crashes, the most, eight of those 20, 40% of the fatals were coded as a single-vehicle crash. So that means they didn't hit another vehicle. And almost all of those single vehicles are runoff-the-road crashes. And at that point, then, they hit something. They hit a tree, a, a signpost, a light pole, or they roll over. And, and, and this is where that seatbelt, use of seatbelt comes in. Because a lot of these rollovers, you can survive, especially where there are new, newer vehicles and our, our airbags. But if you roll over and you're not seatbelted in, you're usually flying through a windshield or out an open window, and you're not surviving that. And a seatbelt, yeah, you might have broke some bones, but you would wa, you would survive that crash if your seatbelt was on. So 40% of these are single vehicles. Probably, uh, speed-related factors in there, rural road, runoff-the-road. Those are things we'll be taking a deeper dive in. The second-highest fatal crashes, four of the 20, 20% coded as other. All four of those were pedestrian crashes. That's a pretty high number when you're, when we're talking basically rural roads. We're not talking downtown Flagstaff pedestrians crossing and, you know, crossing the railroad tracks and heading to the Beaver Street Brew Pub or wherever they're going. These, these are rural roads where pedestrians are getting killed. Far right is the percent of all crashes that that crash type was responsible for. So again, single vehicles, 64, nearly 65% of all the crashes, it was a single-vehicle crash. Next highest, rear-end crashes, 11%. And then about 7% of the crashes are angles. So here we are looking at other factors and characteristics in the crash data. And the darker color, I don't know if that's black or green, I can't tell from here, but the one on the left are the serious and fatal crash percentages. And then the orange is all crash percentages. So a couple of things that I think jump out here that I'd like to point out. The highest bar chart there is for lane departure crashes. 61% of the fatal and serious injury crashes were what was considered lane departure. And that could be running off the road. It could be crossing the center line and having a head-on. It could be a side swipe, but for whatever reason, that driver left their lane and ended up in a crash. A big percentage are tho, those types. That's the, the serious injury and fatal. It's also the highest number for all crashes. 43, almost 44% of all crashes in the county were lane departures. Young drivers for fatal and serious injury. About a fourth of the crashes involved a young driver, and that's classified as under the age of 25. All crashes, about 29% involved the young driver. Our elderly drivers, although they don't jump out as much there, they're still fairly high. 18% of the crashes, fatal and serious injury crashes involved a driver that was 65 or older. What else jumps out? Speed-related, 41% of the fatal and serious injury. And, and there's a couple of checkboxes on the crash report form for speed-related. So most of these speed-related get checked as speed-too-fast-for-conditions. Doesn't necessarily mean they were exceeding the speed limit, but they were over-driving a curve or snowy roads or whatever the condition was. They were going too fast for what the conditions were. But that one jumps out, speed-related. Over towards the far right, 23% of all those 1,600 crashes, so a fourth of the crashes were hitting an animal. That's a lot of animal hits. And I know there's a lot of elk and various things. But, and usually what we see with the animal-related crashes is, it might be a significant proportion of all crashes, but usually nobody gets killed in those. But as you can see here, what, exactly, yes, almost every, yes. No humans usually, but in this case, there was at least one fatal animal-related crash in terms of a human fatality. And then the last one there, the snow, snowy roads, snow, ice, slush. 10% of the crashes are happening in the wintertime on bad roads. So our next steps, tomorrow, we've got the Key Stakeholder Workshop. I think Nate said we've had 20 people sign up. We're expecting a few more walk-ins. But we'll be meeting with them for three hours tomorrow, diving deep into some of this information that we just went over, setting up a schedule of those community events. The public survey, we, soon as the county reviews the, the questions, we'll be going live with that here in the next week or two. And then continuing with our crash data analysis and, and diving into some of those characteristics we just went over. In terms of schedule, and you probably can't see anything on that, it's basically a two-year project scheduled to be totally completed by the end of '27. But most of this will be completed by, towards the end of next year. We're looking to get out and start working on those 14 high-priority routes in terms of the field reviews in, in 2026. And then just our contact information there, Nate's and, and Josh and I, with our email and, and phone numbers. So with that, I guess open it up to some additional questions or comments or discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple. You know, we were involved in creating our first recreation corridor on Lake Mary Road and which, part of it, some of the analysis that you were doing in a much less probably sophisticated way, we were looking at for the creation of that recreation corridor. And, you know, one of the things that, and Christopher, it would be great to get an update on that, how that looks, because we did increased signage, we did increased shoulder, we did increased enforcement. And because that is a heavily-used, kind of iconic recreational road for our community and quite frankly, now for the world. So it'd be interesting to get that. And so just a comment, and I'd love to see the statistics or some of the updated information on that. And then second, you know, part of the reason we did that is we had such a strong public input from, you know, the bi, the biking community, from the running community, from, you know, our recreation community. And I hope they're engaging with you as part of that stakeholders group that you're talking about, so.
Chair, to answer your question first on Lake Mary recreational corridor, this is the first summer that we had the full, everything implemented. So all the crash data won't be available until January. So after January, if we plan on, are running the crash data and seeing what type of improvement we saw or lack of improvement through that corridor from crashes. So we, we'll definitely be able to provide an update on that. And then the second, we definitely have reached out to the bike community and the running communities. We specifically reached out to, I believe, the NAU cross-country coach. And then Martin Entz, he's on the Bicycle Committee for City of Flagstaff to be on our key stakeholder.
Thank you. Any other comments, Supervisor Vazquez?
Yeah, thank you for, for the presentation. It's very illuminating to see the kind of crashes that are happening and, and the numbers, while it doesn't seem significant. Like you said, every, every crash, especially every fatal crash is unacceptable. And so I'm really glad that we're putting the effort in to, to look at our design and look, talk to our partners and see what's most appropriate so we can reduce the crash rates in our county. So thank you for the presentation.
Any other comments, questions? Supervisor Brigade?
Thank you for the presentation. I just have a question, how this is going to fit in or if it will even fit in with the cities. They're, they're doing some work, and I know that they're trying to look at the safety aspects of it. So I just wanted to know if that's outside, just with outside, or the city is doing their own thing and we're doing our own thing? I guess is what it is.
Yeah, Chairman Brigade, great question. So this safety action plan, Metro Plan has done a safety action plan. NACOG has done a safety action plan. All the, both of those safety action plans focus on all the roads within their jurisdictions. And not a ton of county projects came to fruition for that because we don't have as high of crash rates as a City of Flagstaff and some of the other surrounding communities. Then ADOT has its own safety, safety action plan as well. And, and so we're not looking at any of the ADOT routes for that. I think what you're talking about is the City of Flagstaff SS4A grant that they recently got, that they're looking at Great Streets For All is what they're focusing on. So they're looking at all the City of Flagstaff streets and developing, uh, uh, Great Streets Guidelines for their future development, for their future projects. And there's some county roads that tie in with city roads within that area that they're looking on. This particular study isn't really, has much to do with that. But I also sit on that, that Technical Advisory Committee for the City of Flagstaff's Safe Streets For All, Great Streets Planning Committee. So although this study doesn't really fit into that study at all, the county, we're still participating in it. And we're making sure things are addressed from the perspective of areas within the Metro Plan area that are looking at great streets, making sure it matches within our care, uh, community character, and then also matches in with the City of Flagstaff for kind of our two streets kind of combined with each other. Did I answer your question? Okay.
Any other comments, questions? Well, thank you. We look forward as, as you progress on this and.
Thank you.
Appreciate your passion on, uh, safe, safe streets and, uh, safety first for our communities. So thank you.
Thank you.
So we are moving along here. Presentation from Graphite regarding Project Ponderosa and their plans to locate operations in Coconino County supporting the biomass industry. So we have.
Madam Chairwoman, John Salt and Stahl, Economic Development Director, will introduce this item, but I'm just really proud to say, since I have come back to the county, right, and been here and, and years earlier, seen how biomass and our forest restoration efforts are just taking off an industry in the economic development sense, coming back and looking at it, locates and possibilities of being a, a, a part of our ecosystem in the, on the business side of forest restoration efforts. I'll turn to John.
Thanks so much, Eric. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Board. I'm John Salt and Stahl, Economic Development Director with Coconino County. Excited to be here today to talk about Graphite, just to introduce Saskia Verstig, who's representing this biomass outfit out of Pine Bluffs, Arkansas. And just a brief history about how we got to be here today. Back in December '24, Jay Smith with Forest Restoration for Coconino County and I were both contacted by Saskia about their interest in being here in Flagstaff. We were super excited because we were learning that they were going to be able to take a lot of that residual material that ends up being a bottleneck in our system in many ways and doing something very productive with it right here in our county. We started to connect Saskia to our teams at Community Development, our Realtor teams, our partners through EKONA. They started to work with the Nature Conservancy. And long and short of it is, we are here today to hear about some of their plans moving forward to actually start business and start with some of this carbon removal, providing jobs, helping mitigate fires, sequestering carbon, and many other things. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Saskia.
And you've been very patient. I've, I've seen you back there, and I was like, oh, I don't think I've met her before. So, yeah, good. Well, thank you and welcome.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the warm welcome. And yes, it's my first Coconino County Board of Supervisors meeting that I'm here in person watching. So, no, thanks for the, for the warm words, John. And we have been here on the ground for several months trying to put together the pieces of a project we're calling Project Ponderosa. I'm excited today to be here at a first public presentation to give the Board of Supervisors some information about the things we have in the works on this project. about the things we have in the works on this project. And my goal here today is just to inform you about where we're at today in the process, to answer any early questions you might have, and just to start building a relationship with you all as we want to be long-term partners here in Coconino County. So again, my name is Saskia. I represent a private company called Graphite that wants to build a new project here in Coconino County. And we were pulled here by local partners. So the biomass bottleneck that John so aptly named is what actually caused us to start looking at Coconino County all the way from our current operations in Arkansas and start putting together this project here. Right. So what do we want to use this biomass for? If I can leave you all with anything today, I'd like you to remember the three main benefits we want this project to bring to Coconino County. One, reducing wildfire risk. The biomass bottleneck is related to the vast quantities of biomass that are currently in the overstocked forests here around Coconino County that present a wildfire risk for local residents. If there are users that can use that biomass, whether from slash piles or from other forest thinning projects, we reduce that wildfire risk in the county. The second main benefit of this project is to reclaim mines. So what we actually use the biomass for is to backfill gravel pits and aggregate pits and cover them back up and restore them for native habitat use. More detail on where we want to do that and how we want to do that later on. And then the third piece is creating new jobs. This is, the biomass bottleneck is a big local issue. It requires a local solution, and we would create local jobs, rural economic development jobs here for the county by locating here. So we're giving you a little bit of context on who is Graphite, who are we. We call ourselves a biomass carbon removal company founded in early 2023. That may not sound like a long time ago to you all, but I joined at the very early stages of the company, and it's amazing what you can achieve when you have a clear vision and a very motivated team. So in that time, over the last several years, we've developed a process that can take residuals or waste from forestry and agricultural operations and turn that into a carbon product. We've raised about $55 million in capital to finance the building of our first site in Arkansas and grow our business. And we built that facility in Arkansas and have it operating 24/7 today in the center of Arkansas. It's currently employing 20 people at the operational site in Pine Bluff, and we have an additional 15 remote employees that work on all aspects of business and project development. But why would a company from Arkansas come out to Coconino County? As mentioned, you all have clearly identified a biomass bottleneck here. The wildfire crisis is really evident to even those of us coming from out of state and looking at northern Arizona. And Coconino County sits right in the heart of the Four Forests Restoration Initiative and the vast federal lands that need to be managed for forest restoration up here. Why Graphite started looking here is because local partners identified a biomass bottleneck. When they were doing forest restoration projects here on thousands of acres of land in these forests, they were finding no home for the slash piles, the unmerchantable timber, and the excess material being generated there. So what happens? You stack slash piles in the woods, like in that photo up there, and have to burn them because there's no alternative use. That's the best practice today, and you can do it as safely as possible, but it's always going to continue presenting a wildfire risk. And so what Graphite has come in for is to say, perhaps we can use that biomass slash in that material and develop a local project and a local solution to utilize that material. The scope of the project that we're proposing is up to 100,000 tons of CO2 per year. So we measure everything in carbon dioxide removal. But for local partners, so for the biomass partners, the folks that work in the woods all the time, they measure this in green tons or in acres of restoration, right? Graphite would be looking to use about 80,000 tons of biomass residuals a year in its initial scope, and that is equivalent to about 2,000 to 3,000 acres of forest restoration. And I know I'm going to be followed by Mr. Jay Smith with a presentation more about biomass and forest restoration efforts in the county to put that into more perspective. So that's how we fit in, and that's why we've been looking here for this project. So I mentioned a little bit about the biomass utilization being a key benefit of this project, right? And we're working with the local partners, the people that are already going into the woods, the Four Forests Restoration Initiative, the Nature Conservancy, the Arizona Department of Forestry, R4. They're already going and executing these federally managed forest restoration projects, creating these slash piles and creating this biomass material that they need to find outlets for. Graphite would partner with them to ensure that that biomass can be delivered to our operations and that we can then utilize it for our local solution. Let me tell you a little bit more about what that local solution is because it covers the right side of this slide called mine reclamation. You have a photo here of a general rock aggregate pit excavated to about 30 feet. There are dozens, if not hundreds, of such pits around Coconino County, typically required to reslope the sides, revegetate, and then move on after mining has concluded. But what Graphite actually is proposing to do is take the biomass residuals, process them. We would process them by drying them, which makes them inert. So we would remove all the water and make them inert and non-reactive. We would compress them into blocks, and then just like Tetris, we would stack those blocks back up in that mine, effectively backfilling it so that you no longer have a deep hole in the ground, but you can bring it back up to level surface. You can cover that with soil and local plant species, local habitat restoration, and effectively render that degraded, formerly mined land as something that is now a potential native habitat. In addition to that, it becomes a carbon storage site for us. We have effectively removed carbon dioxide from the atmosphere and stored it underground. And we're super excited for this project to be partnering with Babbitt Ranches at a former, at a rock quarry at Gray Mountain, where they have been working with Semex to mine for the past couple of decades. A portion of that site has already concluded its mining operations and is currently sitting as a 25-foot pit in the ground where Graphite would start by placing this biomass material in the ground. That site is also already zoned for inert material storage. So for Graphite to come in and place inert biomass into that pit actually fits what the county has already zoned that site to do. But we will be going a step beyond and working to restore native habitat over the top, working closely with local partners like Babbitt Ranches and other local restoration experts to figure out the best way to manage the top of that site for end-of-life use. I'm gonna pause here because that was a lot of information.
Yeah.
And see if there's any questions.
Supervisor Brigade?
Yes. It's on Babbitt Land, yes. That's correct. Yes. Yes.
Supervisor Antiveris, how long, how many years will it take you to fill this pit?
Excellent question.
Okay.
So I mentioned, we want to be using about 80,000 tons of material per year. We currently expect to use about one to two acres per year for that volume of material. So the current pit size is 20 acres. It would take us between 10 and 20 years to fill that first portion of the pit with the material. And the reason that it takes so long is because we dry it and we compress it down. So we're able to really efficiently use the land and we don't have to go out and use dozens of acres of land for storage. We can keep it here.
So first, first and foremost, this is very exciting. And secondly, slash piles, part of the reason that the slash piles are out there and burned is because of the cost of moving the materials.
Yes.
You know, also then what do you do with it once you've moved it? But I guess, do you move those materials to your site?
We move the materials to the site. So we usually would expect, currently would expect to use trucking to bring them to us. But right now, and we've talked to a lot of our local partners about this, there is no meaningful user of that biomass within Coconino County. You have to take it out of the county, sometimes even rail it out of state, right? And so putting this in Coconino County is the most cost-effective way to use that material.
And I, and so obviously, you all have been doing this. This is your business. You've done a cost-benefit analysis, because I would imagine the cost of removing this from, you know, some of our deep, deep recesses of our forests is going to be very expensive.
Yeah.
And then, and then the sites, where would the, you'd have a couple of sites here in Coconino County. What are your thoughts on, on how you're going to do this?
Right now, our first storage and carbon sequestration site is that property at Babbitt Ranches.
Okay.
Where we will be bringing that material to store it. We'll get that one fully permitted and launch it before looking at any other opportunities.
And is Babbitt Ranches helping to subsidize that? Or is this 100% your product, your, your manufacturing plant?
This is 100% our project that are supporting us as the landowner.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. You're working with a good group.
Yes.
So.
And they've done a lot of, you know, innovative projects with renewable energy.
They have.
Other things. So we're really excited to work with them.
Yep. They're very innovative. So good. And Supervisor Fowler?
She's online.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You mentioned train, you mentioned workforce. Will they need special training? We work with the Coconino Community College, and they're the main ones that are doing specialized training. So I'm just wondering if, if that may be the case that we need to give them a heads up or work with them, maybe at the high schools as well.
Great question. So we are working with wood products, like other wood products manufacturers. So we will be looking for similar types of jobs within operations, logistics, quality control for us. We do want to work with the local community colleges, with local training programs to bring more people into our workforce. We do that today in Arkansas with the local colleges in Pine Bluff as well.
Yeah, and we have our workforce development board. So I'm just wondering how, what the timeline is, if there was, I guess you'll be working with our community manager or our county managers to work those out, those details out. But, you know, any kind of specialized training people may need, we may not currently have it. So it's just a thought that may be there.
And Supervisor Fowler, we also have Gail Jackson from Akona is with, has joined us, and you may have some comments to make at some point during this as well. So thank you. Thanks for joining us, Gail.
Hi, Gail.
And Supervisor Vasquez?
Yeah, and maybe I missed it. I was just curious, like, in terms of once you start going and you're at full operation, how many jobs will this create in our region?
That is the next slide, so you didn't miss it yet.
Okay, okay.
But we'll be looking for 20 to 25 jobs in operations at this site. That's what we currently have at our site in Arkansas, employed in three shifts around the clock at that site.
Thank you. I just want to say that it's really exciting to see a solution starting to formulate to deal with some of the smaller, smaller wood piles and forest biomass that we need to get rid of in our forests. So thank you for bringing this to us.
Supervisor Antiveris?
Thanks, Chair. When you say at that site, are you talking about the location at Babbitt or just that one or several others?
Great question. So I'm talking about the project as a whole.
Okay.
Graphite will be managing both the processing of the material and the storage of material in the ground at the Babbitt site. The processing site, we have not yet located. So we could do that anywhere from where the biomass is created here in the forest, closer to Belmont and Flagstaff, all the way up to the highway, actually at the Babbitt Ranch site. We're still in the works of trying to identify an industrially zoned site that would be suitable for us to process that material.
All right. We'll let you continue.
Yeah, no, that was great.
This is, you can see we're excited. So.
I appreciate all the questions for sure. That's what this is about. All right. So the question about jobs had just come up. So talking a little bit about the broader impacts on community and economic development of this project, we're targeting creating 25 full-time jobs in operations within the Graphite scope of operations for Project Ponderosa. We did complete our commissioning at the Arkansas facility in less than six months. That was a huge bonus of the type of process that we have, the type of project that we have. Once we get our permit and we get the full clearance to begin construction and operations, we're able to ramp up very quickly on this type of project. And then in addition to the, you know, the full-time jobs within Graphite, this of course has an indirect impact on job creation in, on other local partners. So we really try to work with local logistics partners, local construction partners, the folks already working in the forest operations today, working with them to ensure that we're good partners to them in taking that biomass and helping support their workforce. The other piece I'd like to just comment on, because I get really excited about it, is innovation partnerships with local universities, community colleges, and I think you also mentioned K through 12 and high schools and things like that. So y'all have some awesome schools and education systems up here in Coconino County. We love working with students in STEM. As a green manufacturing company, we want to be working with students on internships, job training, other creative research. You already do so much research on habitat restoration and forest management and things like that. So how can a private company like us work with you to create more opportunities to actually get practical experience? In that, we're very open to doing that, and we've got some good examples from Arkansas as well of doing that with the local universities in Pine Bluff. So I just wanted to put the local partners we've worked with so far on a page here together because they've, they've really helped Graphite and me get as far as we are today. I'm excited to see this page continue to fill up with names familiar to locals here in Coconino County and continue to work with people to understand exactly what this county and community needs and how a private company like us can help support those efforts. And one thing I'll just say here, because it may not have come up early in this presentation, but this would be the first carbon sequestration site to our knowledge in Arizona. So it's really exciting to work on this project up in Coconino County. We came here because Coconino County has made it clear it has a biomass bottleneck and wants to bring new biomass industry to the county. So this was really created as a partnership effort with you, and it was customized to the needs of what this county requires, right? Where we're locating, where we're trying to bury this material. The partners on this page have done a lot of work in creating the conditions for sustainable forest management, and we want to help accelerate those efforts and work with them. So we really just appreciate all the effort on this so far and how much I have learned and Graphite has learned about what the challenges you face in managing the forest and where the opportunities are too. The last thing I'll, or the, the last thing I'll share with you here, actually, I'm gonna skip forward one because I'm a little out of order. But why do we think we can do this in Coconino County? It's because we're operating today in Arkansas. So we have a full-scale project employing 20 employees in Pine Bluff, Arkansas. You see there in the map at the left, Pine Bluff is a city of about 50,000 people where we've located our processing facility. It's on the cusp of a lot of agricultural land and a lot of forested land. So in that site, we are able to use both forestry and agricultural waste materials. You'll see photos there at the bottom of our actual operations. So the biomass piles, that may be familiar to some of you here in forest operations, the bricks that we create going down the line, they're pretty small in that picture. But as with any innovative company, we're trying to develop our process to be more efficient over time. These bricks are gonna get bigger and easier to stack over time. And then at the far right is the mine, the sequestration site that we started at in Arkansas. And you can see at the very back there how it's getting filled in with material from our process. So that's why we think we can pull this off in Coconino County because we have that fully operating site today. And I would love to host more visitors in Pine Bluff if anybody wants to see that site in person. So always welcome to come and visit us out there. That's the gist of my informational presentation to you all. I welcome more questions. I'm not quite sure of the decorum, but I welcome more comments as well on this. So Chairperson, tell me how you'd like me to proceed.
Well, so far, so good. So, and you've certainly got our attention. I know we have our forester for Jay Smith, and I wouldn't know if Jay, would you like to say a few words? And obviously, if my colleagues have questions. Supervisor Fowler, I see your hand.
And you see me.
I do.
So I have a question on your engagement. Do you plan to provide community education? And since it sounds like you're gonna be having trucks run on these highways when there's misinformation out there, then we, we get all kinds of questions. So what would be your approach on that? Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. We are very proactive about community engagement. This is a new company. It's a new idea to take the biomass and bury it in the ground. And so part of our responsibility, we feel, is to educate the public and to share that story right from the source. So as I mentioned, this is my first public presentation to the Board of Supervisors. So as I mentioned, this is my first public presentation to the Board of Supervisors. I would love to hear feedback from you all about key stakeholders you would like me to come and speak and present to as well. Over the coming months, we will also be working to file our permit with the ADEQ. So as part of that, we want to show that we are being very proactive in community engagement, because that's only going to make this project better for the county and for the citizens here as well. And to your point about trucking going along the highway, that's one of the key things that we're going to have to share and talk about, is what is the material that we're transporting? Is it safe? What kind of impact does it have locally? So we take all that really seriously. We want to make sure that everybody's informed about what we're doing and has a chance to ask questions.
Yeah, you don't want to look like the uranium trucks going through here, okay? And by the way, For Frye, obviously, I know, of course, Jay's very active in that. I actually sit on the stakeholders group as well, and that's a great place for this presentation. And I may have missed it, you may have already done so. So it'd be a good place to go. Oh, good. I'll try not to miss it. Yeah, that sounds great. And also the Nature Conservancy. You know, they're also very involved in forest restoration work.
Yeah, and they're here.
Oh, wait, Bennett. There you are.
My name is Paul, Kevin.
Hi, guys.
Just some quick comments. Thank you, Chair Hirschman. You know, I've had at least 20, I'll call them ideas, come across through my office of, "I'm going to solve all your biomass problems." And the more I start to talk to people with those ideas, I learn the first question to ask is, "Do you have a full-scale operation going?" And most of them say, "No, I'm doing it in a lab." And I'm like, "Okay, come back to me in however many years when you have a full-scale operation, so we could actually discuss." So when the Nature Conservancy came to me with an idea and said, "Hey, we got this group we've been talking with." And I got invited to go out to see it, but I was out of town when they traveled to Pine Bluff to see the operation. But they came back and they continued to talk about it. And I'm like, "Well, if Joel continues to talk about something, then I know there must be something real behind that." And so that's when we met Saskia, she came out and talked with John and I. And again, first question, "Do you have a full-scale operation?" And she's like, "Oh, yes, we do." And I'm like, "All right, now I'm interested, you know, now we can talk." And so this is, you know, it's going to tie right into my presentation here in a few minutes of just, you know, this is the problem we still have, is the biomass issue. We're going to talk about one of the projects that doesn't require biomass removal, that's right off of Highway 180, that's going to get burned in a couple of years, those piles, unless you get going and we can sell you all that biomass. So I don't know, maybe that's what our goal is. So yeah, I'm excited about this.
You didn't happen to bring a brick with you. I'd love to see what they look like. All right, it would be interesting to see what... And I know it depends on the size. And those look like, what, 14 by 14s or something? Okay.
Sorry. The ones in the picture are the size of a book. But right now, we're working on sizing them up to super sacks. Anybody here has worked in the grain industry and worked with like the 6 by 6 by 6 foot sacks that carry soybeans and other grains? That's what we're working to size them up to right now.
Very cool. So what does the book size one weigh?
About two and a half to three pounds. It's nice for a little art curl.
Yeah, okay. That's not bad. Any other comments, questions? And Gail, I know you're here with us from Acona. We'd love to hear from you. We don't get to see you all that often. And I know Joel's here, and I'm sorry, I didn't see Joel back there from the Nature Conservancy too.
Hi, I'm Gail Jackson with Acona. I just want to speak a little bit to graphite and their project. It's been in the works, we've been working with it for over a year now, right? Yeah, okay. Anyway, they have been so persistent and patient in finding the right place to bury this. And kudos to John Salt and Stahl for making that introduction to Billy and making that happen. They're solving a lot of problems. They're bringing 25 new jobs. They're taking care of the carbon sequestration. And they're helping us with our forest fires issue. And we've talked to a number of these companies over the years. And this is the only one that comes in that doesn't rely on federal dollars. And so I think that's a really important thing to note with this project, is that they are funded and they want to be here. And they've made all of the right connections to connecting with the various groups. And I'm just proud that you're still with us, and we can't wait till you're fully operational. So thank you.
Thank you. Great to see you, Saskia. As Saskia mentioned, Nicole and Kevin, who are back in the room, we went and visited the site in Pine Bluff, Arkansas, almost exactly a year ago. We started contact about a year and a half ago. Conversations continued. We are all desperate for this solution to our significant problem. And Jay and I have been in many of the same meetings over the last four or five years, where we see people come into town and they're like, "We have this solution." And they aren't operational. As Jay said, they're in a lab. And quite often, what they're doing with the biomass is they're converting it into something, whether it's fuel, methanol, sustainable aviation fuel, something. It's fantastic, but it's rather complex. And the lead time to get something like that up and running is immense, decade-plus. What is so wonderful about graphite is the simplicity of it. It is drying this material, compressing it, wrapping it, and burying it. That's it. Not converting it into anything unique or challenging. And so that is just one of the key points that we have been drawn to. And that's why we are supporting and happy to provide any information about the work that we do and hopefully in conjunction with what graphite intends to do.
It's an exciting project.
Yeah.
Exciting. John, you have comments you'd like to make?
Thank you for the opportunity. I just want to reiterate that this is a we thing. Our entire community organization is very excited about the work that graphite's planning to do here in our community. And we can't wait to see their success. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, John, for bringing this to us. So very exciting news. And thank you for being with us. And as I said, you're with good people out there with Babbitt Ranches. All right, good. Thanks. So we're moving along. So we need to resolve as the Flood Control District Board of Directors. So do I have a motion?
So move.
Have a motion? Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have some seconds. That's good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. We are now the Flood Control District Board of Directors. And we are here to discuss an item, Forest Restoration Forest Industry Update. This is timely, huh? Staff will update the District Board of Directors on forest restoration projects across Coconino County and the growing forest industries. And I see that our director, Lucinda Andriani, is already up there at the mic. So please take it away, Lucinda.
Great, thank you, Chair. And we thought we'd take this opportunity, when we're on the topic of forest restoration, to provide an update to the board. It's been a bit, and I think it's a great opportunity. And I do see this as an important opportunity. But frankly, Chair, you asked the key question, which is, will this be cost-effective with the alternatives? I mean, there is an alternative now, as you all know, Noble Power. It is a long way away. And there's definitely a transport cost, there's an environmental cost to that transport. And they have a limited capacity that they're dealing with. And so I think this is, you know, if it can be cost-effective for particularly our steep slopes, because we already face higher costs dealing with the steep slope areas, right? To thin those areas. And in those steep slopes, it's really critical that we have to get the dead and down out. The dead and down, for example, on Bill Williams Mountain, if we just thin, that would not be the game changer. We would not be accomplishing a whole lot. We really have to get that dead and down. That's very true of the Upper Rio and other areas as well, as you know, as you drive around out there. So making sure, you know, hopefully, they can be cost-effective with the alternative because to, so we can utilize our dollars more effectively. We can move forward more quickly with restoration. And we can start to look at other areas that we know are on our list too, like Oak Creek Canyon, areas above Mormon Mountain, above Munn's Park, those areas as well. So anyway, excited to continue to work on that. A question I do have too is, how are they going to power the manufacturing? Hopefully, we could get some kind of biomass. And so, and I would say if they, frankly, the administration appears to continue to be supportive of investment, particularly in biomass. And so if we can support them in getting federal dollars to expand that effort and like bring in maybe a biomass generation plant to operate their facility or convert that material to be able to, they've got to run kilns to dry the material, then that, let's, you know, whatever way we can support them being successful economically, that's what we want to do, right? So excited to provide an update today. I'll turn it over to Jay in a minute here. But I think, you know, we're working our way through that. We've stumbled, to be totally frank. We've stumbled on a few projects in the last year to two years. And I think we're getting things back on track now. I'm very excited we're going to get things back on track, hopefully here soon, with getting an RFP out for the work on Bill Williams. You'll hear the update today, getting some, definitely making some progress in the Upper Rio area. Excited about that. Getting, finally getting the Lowell project off the ground. We're going to be having our kickoff meeting on that shortly. So, you know, I think we are refocused here and I think really excited to move things forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jay and then planning for next year, which will be a part of a broader discussion, obviously, through the budget process. But separate from that, because we have to look at all the components of flood control, having those FEMA special flood area, that process is going to come back to the board in January, looking at what are our financial needs for those areas and mitigating those areas along with continuing our forest restoration initiative work. So with that, appreciate your attention today. I do have to leave here in about 15 minutes or so to go to Tucson for council meeting there tonight. But I know Jay can take it from here, so thank you.
And by the way, I want to also say, some of those stumbles have been beyond our control.
Some have been.
And I think, for example, Bill Williams Mountain, what happened there and the delays that have happened there. There were some also delays caused because of funding or lack thereof. So just want to make that clear.
And we need to keep our eye on the price to keep things moving. We are going to have stumbles. We have stumbles in every project we do. And it's how do we stay focused and keep things moving? And then challenge the status quo and ask questions and move things forward. And that's, you know, that's my focus, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, thank you, Chair Hirschman, again. Jay Smith, I'm the Forest Restoration Director for Coconino County Flood Control District. And we're going to be doing an update of the projects that we are working on. But also, I'm going to update you on some of the industry things that are going on, just so you have a feel for where we're at with some of that. Because as we mentioned, with like Noble Power, they're reaching that point now where they're having to pick and choose where they're going to buy their biomass from, which affects all of our projects. So to jump in, we're going to start with the, one of the highest priorities we have, the Upper Rio to Flag watershed. And the work here that's going on, we've got two projects that the Flood Control District is helping to fund, partnering with the Nature Conservancy on one and with the National Forest Foundation on the other, and of course, the Coconino National Forest. But the work is going as fast of a clip as I've seen in northern Arizona. And if you drive up 180, you'll see what's happening. I mean, it is just incredible to see the work and the amount of work that's coming out.
And we will see it, because we're all driving up there for our retreat. So take an opportunity and take a look at the work that's being done. It is impressive.
There you go. So currently, we have four loggers working on four different projects. One of those loggers has two sides, so I mean, it's actually five, in a sense, logging crews. And we're moving things through. The LaRue project, which is the project that's more of the steeper slope. That is, we are working right now in a collection agreement with the Forest Service to be able to capitalize some of our funding for that project. And Joe, my program manager within the Forestry Department, has been out doing plots, kind of helping us to understand where the most of the dead and down is that we need to focus on in that, those steeper slopes that are just below the Snowball Road as you go up. So working all of that, we, so far, we've been able to find a home for the biomass that we're basically requiring or making sure is being removed from the projects. All of those are the projects that are on the right-hand side as you're going north on 180 or whatever that, I always get confused on 180 whether I'm heading north or whether I'm heading west or east. But on the right-hand side is where we're really requiring all the biomass removal, just because of the proximity to the San Francisco Peaks. We've found homes for that. But again, we are struggling. I think that's going to continue to be an issue as we move forward. So happy to see companies like graphite coming in. Wing West, which is the project, as you're driving out of town, that's on the left-hand side, you'll see large biomass piles off of the highway there. Those are slated to be burned in a couple of years. So again, that's where we want this industry to kind of be able to consume all of those if we can. But those, expecting a large pile burning, you can smell it in the air today. Or at least I can. I don't know if you, maybe it's just me being sensitive to it, but I can smell it right now. Moving on to Bill Williams Mountain, this is a project that we are now working solely with the Nature Conservancy and the Kaibab National Forest. I don't want you to worry about the details of the map that's on here. I want you to, really what I put this on here for is to show the comprehensive coverage of the projects that are going on around the mountain. So kind of in the center of all that, in that green area, at the very top of the mountain, you can kind of work, see how it's working out from there. The green highlighted areas are completed. The red are either in progress or the red is the ones that we are working on to get into contracts. The yellow is either in progress or slated to go into off-slope areas. So the red is all the steep slope areas. And then we have the north part of the mountain, which is what the Flood Control District is most worried about. And then the south side of the mountain on the steep slope is more Salt River Project that is looking at that, because that all flows down into the Verde River. So they're looking at some of the funding that they'll be putting to that. So, and I'm not going to get into the numbers yet, because I have some, what I handed out to Hugh is a comprehensive slide for the numbers, the dollar amounts. And then I have a matrix that I built to really bring it all together for you at the very end. Another project that we are slightly involved in, we've only had to put $290,000 toward a little small area that had some steeper slopes. That's part of the REPI project, that Readiness Environmental Protection Initiative that's through the Department of Defense. This is the one we worked on with National Forest Foundation and the Coconino National Forest. They received a $2 million, $1 million REPI grants that's going to help treat 5,000 acres. And then in the Biden administration, the Forest Service put $10 million towards these REPI projects here. So we have a fair amount of funding to go into this. It's all surrounding that, that, always, interferometer. Telescope out on Anderson Mesa and above Lake Mary. So this is where we're focusing that. What's good about this project as well is that there is thousands of cords of wood that's coming off this project, going into the Wood for Life areas in Navajo and Hopi communities. A lot of wood going that way. Miller Timber Company is the one doing it. This is the Ponze machine that they have. They actually have, I think, six of those out there right now. So they left during the summertime. I forgot to mention this on the first slide, that our loggers had to kind of, they had to go into fire restrictions, which means they had to work at night, which slows progress down a little bit. And so for Miller and the Ponze machines, they decided just to move off and go to a project in Colorado where they can continue to work during the daytime. And so they are now back. They're working and they're moving through acres fairly quickly. Those machines are pretty incredible. And we're... Those, those machines are pretty incredible and we're hoping to be able to utilize them in some of our other areas that are steep slope, but maybe not as rocky, and that's where they, they struggle.
And we get, we were supposed to get a tour of those, and of course, they got pulled off. So we, I'd really like to see them.
Yeah, we're going to get you out there and then we want to get, if anybody wants to go out and look at the stuff in the Upper Rio and, and kind of talk more science about what we're doing out there. Because there's a lot of questions, I think, from the public, meadow restorations that are going on out there that looks like we're cutting big trees. Well, we are cutting big trees, but they're, they're 80 to 90-year-olds, just like the small diameter trees. They've just been encroaching into the meadows. There's a reason that we used to have a lot of large meadows out here, and, and so we're trying to bring that back in some areas. So people, you know, there's concern out there of why we're cutting some of these trees. And so I'd like to equip you guys with the answers for some of that. Okay, let's get into logging itself here. Again, like I said, that the fire restrictions did kind of slow them down this summer, but they are now really cranking up as we did get some moisture. I would say that several of our logging contractors have invested over a million dollars this last year in improving their fleet of having more equipment or getting their equipment kind of in better shape so that they can, once these, these conditions hit, the right conditions, they're ready to go and they're moving and, and getting more and more acres treated per day. You know, it's kind of the nature of the business to have in the summertime, those fire restrictions, and then you have this perfect period right now where you can just blow and go and get, get things done. And then eventually, we hope to see snow. And once we get, you know, a certain amount of snow, it can slow projects again and, and kind of get them. And then we have, obviously, the springtime when the snow melts, that kind of puts them out of the woods for two weeks to up to a month at times. So they're in that price, that, that timeframe right now where they are trying to get as much done as they can. So that's why we see a lot of trucks coming through town. And then you'll also notice, you know, that we don't have as many trucks as you'd think because a lot of them are using the 222 road and, and heading through the forest and coming back out of Belmont there so they don't have to go through town with their log trucks, which I appreciate that. And they don't like to come through town either. And I will say with the, the logging, that with the eight crews that we have, we, you know, have over half of them in the, the Upper Rio to Flag right now. So obviously, they're seeing that the need and the priority that we've put on it, that the Forest Service is putting onto the Nature Conservancy. So everybody is kind of falling into line saying, yes, we want to, we want to work on that area first. And so they really, you know, having our four move their equipment in to Wing West, it just shows that we're all working together. To the industry side of the sawmills now, a couple of things that are, several things that are going on. We currently have five sawmills that we're hauling to. Three of those are in county, two of those are out of county, maybe even six, wasn't thinking about the one over Heber that has restarted that they're hauling is the larger diameter logs to. So our sawmill capacity right now is kind of where it needs to be. We're in a good spot. We're working to still solve this Biomax bottleneck. And so I've been working with ASU Lightworks on what they're calling the Biomass to X project, where they've kind of been looking at really those new technologies, some of those that Joel mentioned, methanol, sustainable aviation fuel, biochar, what is the right thing for us to look at for that bigger solution? But in the meantime, obviously, we're looking at every solution and those that are quick and can, can really get up and running quickly. So we all know about R4, the work that they have been doing, the investments that they've made. They're up to sawing as much as a million board feet in a week at their sawmill. That's kind of incredible for around here. And so they don't have to do that every week because they would overrun kind of the markets that we have right now, but they are capable of doing so. I've got a picture of their first rail car, so they shipped a load of lumber by rail a month ago. And, you know, again, all that does is expand their markets a little bit further out. So gives them more opportunity to, to increase how much they're, they're moving through their sawmill. I was just out there a, a couple of weeks ago, and I mean, just, I just get amazed every time I go out there to see, you know, that they're continuing to improve. They're not just sitting there going, well, we're, we're doing what we want to do. They're, they're just going to continue to improve. Southwest Forest Products, which is a pallet mill in Phoenix, they've invested several million dollars in a new sawmill that's going to almost triple their capacity. So they're going to go from like 10 to 15 loads a day to 30 loads a day, what they're going to consume. So all this stuff, like I said, we're going to have a home for the logs. It's going to be the biomass. It's going to continue to be the bottleneck. You know, pallet mills, we always kind of are concerned because they just, you don't make a whole lot of money off pallet lumber, but the, the market has been fairly stable over the last several years and, and looks to be into the future. So we're happy to see, at least we have some stable markets. It's not, the lumber commodity markets is one of those that just goes up and down and up and down. And really, ours is tied to housing because a lot of what R4 does is makes molding. So it's really tied to the housing market. So, you know, if we see a dip in housing, we might see a dip in some of their demand. We're also working on a second project with ASU Lightworks. The US Forest Service came to us locally here and said, we need somebody, a third party, to help us kind of understand what do biomass industry and investors need to come here? And so ASU Lightworks is helping us kind of build out a, is it a 20-year contract? What is, is, what kind of fiber supply? What are the things that are in, in need for them to be attracted to come here? So we're working through that right now, and we've got a very short six-month turnaround time for that. So we're working pretty much weekly, trying to figure those answers out and talking to a lot of people. And then also, we, we supplied a full load, thank you to Joel, who helped me get a load of our biomass grinding from the forest all the way up to Idaho National Labs for them to start working on what are the other products that we can make out of this biomass? What's it good for? What's the chemical composition? What, you know, and so they're breaking all this down, they're sending it off all across the world, plus using their own labs to try to figure this out. And we had them down here just a couple of weeks ago to kind of look at the operations and see what they're doing. So we're, we're turning every rock that we can find over right now to try to find a solution for this. So I'm going to go before we get to the comments and questions, the two slides that are, two sheets that I handed you. The first one is kind of a forest restoration investment slide. And what I wanted you to see that for this fiscal year in 2026, we had a budget of $5.2 million. We had one, nearly $1.5 million still left in National Forest Foundation's project fund account that was going towards Bill Williams Mountain. We had actually 2.5. We used a million of that for the Durfer project in the Upper Rio to Flag to help with the biomass removal on that. But we still had this 1.5 million out there. So we actually, Lucine and I talked, and we said, it's really best if we get that back. And so we've, we've asked for that, there, it should be this week that we get that funding back. We're kind of trying to decide where is the best use for that, but in the meantime, we wanted to be gaining the interest off of it, you know? So.
Get it back from?
From National Forest Foundation.
Okay, all right.
So it's going to be back in our accounts, gaining interest while we determine what's the best use of those dollars. So far, though, we've, this year have invested the $2.064 million on the Hawk project with the Nature Conservancy, and we have, so we have the 5.6 million that we're looking at because some of this was carryover, that we're going to be putting into Bill Williams Mountain over the next couple of fiscal years. And again, we're really being more direct about how we do this instead of just saying, okay, nature conservers, here's $5.6 million and go use it for the next three years. We're keeping some of that, so we're getting that interest off of it. And we're, as we get projects lined up and as they need the funding and get them set up to be able to get the project going, that's when we're getting them the funding. So it's a little bit slower doled out versus what we did with NFF. Kind of learned a lesson there that better to dole it out versus just handing it all over and then, you know, if, if a project goes one way or the other, then, you know, you're having to play give back, and that's not a good way to do things. So we still are looking at the 2027 projected funding need of about $6 million, and I'll go over that in the matrix a little bit more. So far, so from 2020, when we first started investing in forest restoration to 2025 and what we have invested, so far, we've got $5.4 million invested. The great number that I love to look at here is the leverage funding. We've been able to leverage with that 5.4 million, $16.7 million of federal and partnership dollars. So that's, to me, that's kind of what, why we're doing what we're doing. And to do that, we've, through that, those funding, we've been able to treat, to date, 3,140 acres. So, but you'll see that our goal is much larger than that when we get to the next slide. And then we're, we're at over 5,000, well, not we, but the, the whole community of, of industry is over 5,000 cords that have been donated to Wood for Life out of the projects. So on the matrix here, the next little colorful matrix that we created, this really goes through each project area and then the individual projects within those areas. So on the top, you have the Upper Rio to Flag. You have the Hawk project, which is that we're working with TNC, that we contribute, what we contributed, what the Forest Service contributed, the total cost of that. The Durfer, the same thing. The partner contribution on the Durfer includes about $110,000 of NFF money that they put towards that from their federal appropriations. And then you've got about $550,000 from SRP for that project. LaRue 1 is what I'm calling this first phase that we are working on right now with the Forest Service, where we're going to be putting the $2.4 million into likely a, a big chunk of that in this first fiscal year or this fiscal year. And then that's where we're going to see, because that's only going to treat about 370 of the 1,500 or so acres that are in the LaRue project. So that's just a little bit of a drop in the bucket, but we want to get things going, get it started. It's just a critical area that we need to, to get going.
Is this Ponze or is this going to have to be helicopter?
Ponze or some other, if, I mean, we're open to, we're not going to restrict it to any certain type, but we're looking at not $20,000 an acre, but $65,000, $7,000 an acre that is going to help us do a lot more with a lot less. Yeah. And so that's, that's where Joe's out doing a lot of that work, to try to help us determine those acres. So you'll see then in LaRue 2, what I'm clumping the rest of those acres in as unfunded. So there's about $7.9 million, uh, million dollars worth of work to be done on LaRue project in the Upper Rio that has, has yet to be funded. Wing East is the project that Perkins Timber Harvesting has been doing. $3.8 million of that to get that project done was from the Forest Service. We put nothing into that project, and it's 95% complete. And then Wing West is the R4 project on the left side of the road. No, no dollars were contributed because the timber actually there is paying for its way, and because there's not biomass removal, the timber pays for itself to get out of the woods. So there's no investment needed from anybody on that project. I like those kinds. And it's, it's nearly a 5,000 acre project, too. Moving then to Bill Williams Mountain, so Joel helped me out, figure all this out because we've kind of gone, Joel and, and his team and the Forest Service on the Kaibab have really worked to try to figure out where are those acres that we don't have to use helicopter that may have been lumped into helicopter acre? You know, we're trying to really dissect this with a scalpel to cut out those acres so that we can have maybe smaller projects, but utilize equipment that may cost $3,000, $5,000 an acre versus $20,000 an acre if we can. So we're really, their, their team is really spending a lot of time out on Bill Williams, getting that. So you can see, we had a, a small, little four-acre project right at the very top, right below those towers, those communication towers that are so critical for all of our work here in the county with the Sheriff's Department and Public Works and all. There were, there was a lot of wood that had been hand-thinned and piled up there. That was, they were looking to burn, but they just never felt comfortable. And then they had a lot of dead trees that we wanted to remove. So they, they did that work for, for acres, but it was real critical right there at the very top. We used a little bit of our money for that. The rest came from the US Forest Service. AB Base is a project that is just about completed, that just started next spring. Okay. Okay. That project completed, AB Base will be starting this spring. Again, that's one of those carve-outs to try to reduce that cost because that was 48 or 73 acres that we had originally in helicopter logging, which would have been $1.4 million. We've got it now down to $584,000 cost. So that's, those are the things that are really going to make a difference as we do this. And, and so, and then you'll see, I have SS next to some of the projects. Those are the steep slope proj, those are the helicopter projects on Bill Williams Mountain. So you have Creek, which is the one that's the most recent one that we're working on, the RFI now, and then should be putting RFP out in the springtime. That's going to have the start date of July 1. Hopefully, we have some helicopters ready to go, or at least some, the thinning going on or the cutting going on ahead of the helicopters in July of 2026. Charlie and Alpha Bravo and Lookout are all those projects that then kind of work around those steep slopes on the north side that we have not completed yet. You'll see the funding that we have for Charlie. We have another Bravo Hill East. That's another one of those that we're trying to carve out acres to reduce that cost. But then Alpha, Bravo and Lookout, we, we don't have the funding yet. That's going to be in out years as we continue to move forward. And then just so we're clear on everything, we're, we're putting money into the REPI project on Mormon Mountain and NPOI. You have the two, the Marshall project and the Johnny's. We're currently working on Marshall right now, and Johnny's is going to be funded hopefully through that $10 million that the Forest Service has for that. But going down to that green bar at the bottom, we're going to be treating, or we're going to be part of, and, and because when we put money into Hawk and Durfer, Wing East, Wing West, any of those others, that, that's how it all kind of comes together. So our, while our funding may not be on Wing East, the Forest Service put funding into it knowing that we were helping to fund the one right above it, and it was going to increase the amount of coverage that we're getting, the bang for our buck, basically. So e- even though I'm not taking credit for it, I'm saying, hey, we're, we're part of this big ecosystem here that's doing all this work and, and helping to get it done. So through all these projects, we're going to be at nearly 20,000 acres. We're going to likely have $10 million, $11 million invested, maybe more as we figured out some of these unfunded projects. The Forest Service is going to be, they're at $23 million, partners at $2.6 million. Now, this doesn't include that with the Nature Conservancy, I, I kind of held Joel down and started beating on him a little bit to say, I, I need a cheaper cost. You know, we were paying 15% overhead, and we do that with the Forest Service, too, if we, if we use them. And, and Joel said, I'll do it for eight. So, you know, he's working that, that, that lower rate for us to help stretch our dollars even more on our project. So I'm joking about the beating him down, but, you know, just, he's a good partner. TNC is a great partner to work with us this way. So, you know, we're, we're looking in the work that he's doing with really dissecting those acres out, it's probably going to save us close to $2 million. So that's $2 million I can put either on further acres on Bill Williams or in Upper Rio or wherever. So, you know, every, everything makes a difference. So I hope this, this chart really helps you kind of know where the dollars are going and, and who's contributing where.
You know, the, I have a question on Lowell, and I know we're just kind of partnering it, and that's not our money per se, but maybe just an update on Lowell, the Lowell project?
Yeah, so we have the, the contract is now in place. GFFP is running that project. They're getting an MOU done right now with Lowell Observatory and with the City of Flagstaff. So that, because City of Flagstaff is putting the 100,000 in, Lowell 50,000. And then the City of Flagstaff is taking that opportunity as well to do some work on Thorpe Park. That, that bounders right where the steep slope starts happening going up on Mars Hill. SRP is going to help put some dollars into that. So again, it's one of those where people start feeding off of everybody putting dollars into this. And while we, we're not actually putting our dollars in, we put a lot of sweat equity and other things into this and, and going to Senator Kelly and Sinema for those dollars. So we have a role in this. And then, so Lucine has set up some biweekly meetings to start as we start to move forward. I'll be doing a lot of the monitoring out on the forest to make sure that the contracts are being upheld to the Forest Service standards.
When are they going to start that?
Likely we'll put the RFP or GFFP will put the RFP out this winter and start in the spring. Basically, we don't have the logging capacity to start another project where, so hopefully Perkins and others will get some of these projects done and then they can move, move under that in the springtime.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Supervisor Antiveris?
Yeah, actually just to comment and Joel, I'll start with you. Thank you for reducing the rate from 15 to eight. Okay, yeah. And I believe you that you didn't physically beat him up because he was smiling behind you. Yeah. Anyway, this has been a great presentation and I really appreciate you talking about the carving out because it's 6,500 an acre versus $20,000 an acre. So every acre is a $13,500 savings and two acres is 27,000 and so on and so forth. So it adds up quickly. I think you said to like 2 million?
Yeah, almost 2 million.
Yeah, that's, that's incredible for really thinking about this outside the box and doing that. So I appreciate it. Yeah.
It's great news and, you know, quite frankly, when you, it, when we go up on 180, it's, it's impressive just to, to see, except for you, who's going up 64, but the rest of us who are going to go up 180, it is.
It's breathtaking the time to drive her.
It really is. It, it's very impressive, that work that's being done. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
I'm sorry, I do have one more and it may be proprietary to R4, so feel free to tell me that you can't answer. But I drive by there all the time and there is a massive amount of product sitting really on the highway side and then the logs on the west side. Did you see that molding is the end user for that?
A lot of, probably right now, almost 80% of it is coming into molding. Just because of the, you know, we can't make structural lumber out of our trees. So, uh, there, there's a few good boards that they get out that they can sell for grade lumber. Basically their bottleneck at the mill are two things. The kilns, they have a limited supply of, of, or amount of kiln capacity that they can dry the lumber. And for Pontos Pine, you basically have to dry it to get it to move to a newer product or a higher valued product. So they're drying basically every piece of lumber that they run through there unless it's just really, really low grade. Then they plane it and then they turn it into the molding. They also have their engineered wood products machine that, uh, kind of does some other things to increase the value. That machine, when I was out there last time, they have it shut down because it was having some issues. They're trying to get some specialists in to figure it out. So that, that line is not running currently, but they hope to have it running within the next month or so. Their other problem is about, when you take a round log and turn it into square p, boards, you have waste. And they have about 40% waste, which is actually pretty good. Most mills in, in the Southwest are 50%. So half of that log that goes into the mill, half of it turns into boards, half of it turns into chips, sawdust. If they go, say Brad Warsley or Novo Power stops accepting wood from them, the wood chips that they produce for two weeks, they have to shut the mill down or they're overrun with chips. So they're hauling chips to places that they shouldn't have to go, go to into California and Nevada. I mean, they're, they're going all sort, just to keep the mill running. So we want them to have those outlets, uh, to keep that mill running because that's going to help us get more acres treated.
Right, and I know what you're talking about because those are those piles, those huge piles. It looks like sawdust that are sitting out there.
Yeah, and, and just most of them is chips, uh, have, most of their residual is chips. And that's what caught on fire, what, six months ago or five months ago? You know, that, that's a concern. So they're, and they're concerned about it too. They don't want to, they don't want to catch on fire. So.
Right. And, and this is, this is an area that graphite can help fill? Yes?
So, is Saskia still here? She's still here?
There she is.
Yes, but I want her taking it out of the woods.
Yeah.
So yes, but I don't want her to do that. I want her, I mean, if she increases her capacity to, you know, adds another line or whatever and.
Right.
But it is a blend. It's going to be a blend. I mean, I know she's going to blend some of that because it's just easy. It's right there. She doesn't have to worry about weather or whether the trucks are there. She can always buy from them. So I understand that they're going to blend some of that and that's, that's good. That's, that's what needs to happen.
Yeah, and, and I, and I know what you're talking about too, because you have these, these piles, but it's still fuel in the forest if they're not removed from the forest. And I see that as well. So.
It is, so.
It's all the pieces coming together. So this has been a good afternoon of forest news.
It has been a great afternoon, yes.
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions? Yes, our county manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jay, great afternoon, great presentation, very informative. Thank you to you and John and Saskia for, and our partners, uh, as well, Joel, with all of the information. Jay, just a quick question in looking at the financial piece and then our future needs on, um, the handout that you provided. Fiscal year 2027 projected forest restoration funding need 6 million. I believe that's in the.
It's in our tenure plan.
Yeah, I had a thought so.
Yeah, I'm not asking for more. I'm just saying that that's still projected, that's, we're going to need that.
And, and I thought 2027, that's a ways out. Actually, it's not. That's our next budget cycle and we're starting to plan for that right now. So thank you, Jay.
And, and not only as is budgeted, but this is what we promised the community when we raised the taxes for, uh, for the Flood Control District is, is this commitment for forest restoration. And the good news is we can show our community from this presentation that we're honoring that commitment. So thank you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
Yes, Madam.
All right. I'm so sorry. Supervisor Fowler?
Yes, well, thank you, um, Jay and team for a great presentation. I, you know, they come, we need, it'd be really good to get a summary of this so that when we go out into the community, we as county, um, when we attend and we provide a report, it'd be really good for us to have that. I know you can't make it to every, um, meeting and I think this is such an important information that you just provided. We know how busy you are and, and just the amount of work that needs to be done and just the cost is, you know, you, you have to juggle numbers all the time and trying to figure out how you're going to pay for it and be able to meet certain deadlines. And I just think it'd be really good for us to provide that. And then, um, maybe a short, I, I was thinking about how could we, how could you, we provide this community, out to the community? Maybe a short clip of a video, a ve, real short and be able, I don't know if, how you could do that. But anyway, to also provide, um, information. It's just that information sharing is just so important because we do get these questions. You keep talking about forest restoration and that, well, how do you do that and what does that mean? And we're there trying to, um, explain how some of those, um, what that means, you know? Just telling our story, your story as, and your team's story, um, as to how you're all working together to, and the end result is really keeping the public, um, the safety of the community. So, um, so I would, I would just say that and thank you for, uh, such an informative, uh, presentation. Thank you.
I will work with Melissa Randazzo on, on a video. If you watch Channel 3 News, I get to be on that very, very often because Mason loves to go out there.
I was going to say, Mason, Carol, if you're out there, we, we need you to come here and, and do this video.
We just, I was just there like two weeks ago. My mom lets me know every time because she's a news watcher and so she, she easily lets me know, I saw you on TV. So, um, and I'll say that luckily my time is getting a little bit, uh, more flexible now that, um, I'm, I'm joining the ranks. I'm a Flynn Brown Fellow finally, graduated last week. So, um, that's a big time commitment, but it's, it's now, uh, where I can focus back in on this.
Well, congrats. As always, thank you and thank you for the update. Really appreciate it. So. All right, so we are moving along. And, um, it is, we did 25, I believe, discussion and update regarding state or federal legislation and our administrative matters. Although I wonder if, um, and this may be under county manager, um, update, but it would be great to get a update on what's going on with SNAP because we know SNAP benefits like our WIC benefits have, uh, been discontinued and it's really affected so many of our, uh, vulnerable in our community. So it'd be great to let our community know what we've been doing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are prepared to give this update.
Sorry, we need to resolve back as the board.
Thank you. We need to resolve as the Board of Supervisors.
Thank God you're here, Lindsay.
Seriously.
I'm obviously way too tired today. All right, can I get a motion?
So move.
Back as the Board of Supervisors.
Yeah, so move.
All right, do I have a second? Motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are now the Board of Supervisors. Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Great update from Keith and Deputy County Manager Eric Peterson on our state and federal agendas. We, we realize the strength that we have together. We've experienced that in County Supervisors Association and we'll continue to experience that with the agendas that we set and how we present those agendas. We are prepared to give an update on WIC and SNAP as Deputy Manager Erica Philpott has been working with our amazing team in Health and Human Services, Michelle Axeland and her team. And so Erica, we'll give you the floor to just talk a little bit about how we're tracking.
Thanks, Erica.
Great, thank you, Andy. Thank you, members of the board. And thank you to our HHS Department and Director Axeland for her update, which I'll share with you. So regarding SNAP, the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, Coquigny County currently has just over 8,265 households receiving SNAP benefits with an average monthly benefit of approximately $309 per household. The Arizona Department of Economic Security, DES, continues to accept and process new applications, which is important information. However, as of November, as we all know, benefits are not being loaded onto EBT cards for use at participating retailers. Households that had existing balances on their EBT cards may continue to use those funds until they are depleted. So also really important information. Statewide, DES typically issues approximately $155.5 million in SNAP benefits each month, serving around 433,000 households, which is an estimated 855,000 individuals, including 347,000 children. Governor Hobbs' office was asked whether the state of Arizona could cover SNAP benefits in the absence of federal funding. And the US Department of Agriculture clarified that SNAP allotments are fully federally funded and there is no legal provision for states to pay the benefits and later be reimbursed. So DES has confirmed that it does not have sufficient funding to backfill these federal benefit costs. And Michelle shared that there are unverified reports online suggesting that President Trump may authorize partial payments for SNAP recipients following a recent federal court ruling. But as of this morning, that has not been confirmed. So those are just unverified reports. As you are likely aware, uh, confirmed federal funding has been issued for the WIC program, but not for SNAP. But continuing to talk about SNAP, the Public Fiduciary's Office, uh, reports that 12 clients of the PF's office are currently on SNAP. And I'd like to applaud, uh, Rashida and Michelle for working together because since those 12 clients are directly affected by the federal shutdown, uh, the two departments have partnered together to provide daily meals for impacted clients through the Flagstaff Senior Centers Lunch Program. At present, eight clients have, uh, are participating, have asked to participate and the meals are being, um, prepared by the Flagstaff Senior Center staff and picked up by the Public Fiduciary staff to be distributed daily. The meals were served for the first time yesterday and meal service went great yesterday thanks to the Public Fiduciary staff at HHS. So, uh, very excited to report that. To speak about a WIC for a moment, the William, the Women, Infants and Children's Program update. Six Arizona counties have submitted draft intergovernmental agreements, IGAs, to wire funds to the Arizona Department of Health Services to sustain food benefit payments temporarily. So thanks to our board for doing that as well. President Trump released $450 million in federal contingency funds on November 3rd, allowing Arizona to extend WIC food benefits. And Michelle and staff received an update today at 11:30, uh, receiving word from the state that they have revised their estimation for how long the funds will last based upon current shopping trends and current caseloads. So the state's estimate is that there may be WIC funding, uh, in Arizona for food benefits through December 12th and for payroll for HHS, HHS staff on the WIC program through December 6th. So that's an update that they received just before lunch today and that's a new estimate, uh, that is slightly longer. But again, um, thank you to you, our board, uh, for accessing, allowing the access of Coquigny County Stability Fund dollars to sustain staff wages and food benefits for WIC recipients, uh, through the end of December. And of course, we want to mention that we have mobilized a countywide food drive to help address food insecurity among affected families. Many departments have joined this effort. Donations are being distributed to local food banks. And so the collection sites include this building, the 219 East Cherry Building, also the 110 East Cherry Building directly across the street, the Health and Human Services Building on King Street here in Flagstaff, Health and Human Services in Page and the Williams Senior Center. And an exciting thing to report on that is that the Health and Human Services team reports strong community participation with approximately two full boxes of food being donated daily this week to support local families. So, uh, very, very exciting, uh, that we're making that big of a difference, uh, with this countywide food drive for employees and the community. Yes, absolutely. So this Saturday, November 8th, Stuff the Bus event at the Safeway on Plaza. We are posted for a quorum for that event. The event is from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So we encourage the community and employees to come out and help us stuff the bus on that day. Also, I just wanted to remind the board that, that Deputy County Manager Eric Peterson sent an email, um, on last Friday asking when each of you might be available to join us at the Stuff the Bus event. So if you, thanks if you've already responded to that and if you haven't had an opportunity to respond that, to that email, if you could, uh, let Eric know that as well, that would be great.
Yeah, I really hope that most of us can make it out there for at least, you know, a couple hours. I think it's really, you know, important to kind of join the community on this effort. So, um, that's fabulous. Good. Any questions, comments? Please keep us updated on SNAP because, you know, the, the court order is pretty clear that the SNAP funding is to be, uh, paid and released. So. Quick question. Oh, I'm so sorry, Supervisor Antiveris?
No, you're fine. On the Stuff the Bus, um, and I hope it gets stuffed, all of that is, where is that distributed? How does that happen?
Thanks for that question. So that's, that's in partnership with the Flagstaff Family Food Center.
Got outlets countywide. So it's going, yeah, out great.
It's a great event. We've done it for many, many years. And we usually have really great success in stuffing the bus. And for the community to know, there will also, uh, be Stuff the Bus on Sunday as well. That, that same weekend on November 9th, there will be more Stuff the Bus opportunity. We haven't posted for a quorum on that day because we don't believe that a quorum will be able to attend on that day. But there, just so the community who's watching knows, Stuff the Bus is more than just Saturday.
And it's at both safeways?
At both safeways, yes.
Although the bus is at the Plaza. The real bus.
Because we will be stuffing the actual bus.
Stuffing the.
On Saturday, at Plaza.
And there's three safeways here. So what two are they, they're out? It's the Plaza and what Cedar?
Cedar.
Or, okay.
Cedar. Yeah, well, you know, Mountain Lion provides the bus, but they should have a bus there. It's your fault.
It's still satisfying when you get to put it on the truck too. Not to discount the bus, but it's satisfying all the way. So anyone who wants to donate, it will be fantastic.
All right, yes.
Madam Chair, members of the board, and Eve Walters, our Assistant Director for Health and Human Services, and Michelle, Michelle Axeland are on listening as well. So just want to thank them on behalf of all of us for, um, keeping us informed and working on behalf of our, of our county and our residents.
Absolutely, and, and hopefully everybody got to see the very nice thank you card signed by the HHS staff to the Board of Supervisors for continuing the WIC program. And we appreciate the thanks, but really the thanks go to you all. And, and really appreciate what you're doing with SNAP as well. All right, any other comments, questions? Wow, this is great. Anything else that you have, County Manager?
Under this item, I don't believe we do unless Keith has something for the good of the order. I don't believe he does. So next item would be twenty-sixth, the planning calendar. If you'll entertain that, well, we can go through that just a bit.
Are we, are we still, I mean, do we want to do the planning calendar? Maybe we can look at that during the retreat? And, and I, uh, and is that, unless there's something you want to bring?
Nothing super pressing. I think you all know, uh, what's on your calendars and what's ahead of us. Item number twenty-seven, I do have something quickly.
Okay.
Uh, and that something is, Madam Chair, members of the board, uh, Eric Peterson sent out an email, um, last week on convening a working, working groups for our upcoming countervertures and celebrations. Um, Dark Skies, twenty-fifth anniversary, and that's very important to our county and our community and what we represent, uh, as well as our Route sixty-sixth, one hundredth anniversary. I believe Supervisor Fowler is involved in some, uh, a statewide effort there. And the Coquenino County one hundred and thirty-fifth anniversary. And so we are asking for your participation and anything you would like to be involved in. We want to get started meeting in these working groups, uh, hopefully next week, the, the November eleventh range. So, um, just wanted to bring that to your attention. And I don't know if you had gotten that email. I know we sent it to all of our, um, elected officials and leadership team. You may not have gotten that. That's fair.
I don't remember seeing it. Has anybody else seen it?
Okay. Yeah, we pro-, uh, we probably then sent it to our elected leadership group. That said, here today talking about it and, and I saw Supervisor Fowler popped on the screen. So, um, just some really great opportunities for us to celebrate who we are and really link those celebrations to hopefully some initiatives that we can move forward as well.
Absolutely. All right. Any other comments, questions? I think we can wave our round table. And, uh, I look forward to seeing everybody at, uh, Grand Canyon. Uh, we're going to be at the Thunderbird Room, uh, overlooking the, um, overlooking the Grand Canyon for our retreat. And we'll have, um, lunch, early lunch, eleven o'clock at, uh, the El Travar. All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We're, we are really looking forward to the retreat just to have open, honest, great conversations amongst ourselves, challenge one another. Uh, interestingly today, our Public Works, um, uh, division managers met here. They wanted to meet here and really, uh, wanted to share with us some ideas that they have and hear from us on what the future of the county looks like. And there are so many things, um, that, um, are out of our control, like, like, like the, all of the climate, the financial climate, the political climate and the climate in general. But we can, we can, but we can control what we can control and that's good planning. Uh, and, uh, we're going to continue to do that. We're really excited to, to be working with you tomorrow. So.
All right. With that, meeting is adjourned. Everybody drive safe.